I call the order to Scott County Board of Adjustment for August 12th. First thing on the agenda is a roll call.
Commissioner Hussein. Commissioner Pika. Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Bonnoff.
Here.
Commissioner Hentges.
Here.
And Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Next thing on the agenda is introductions. To my far left is Brad Davis, our planning manager. And Greg Wagner, to my left is principal planner, but he's acting as deputy clerk tonight. Marty Schmitz in the audience, our zoning manager. Nathan Hall, he's here also. And he's associate planner. And Tom Wolf, our county commissioner. Okay, next thing on the agenda is approval of June 10th, 2024 minutes. Everybody's had a chance to review the minutes. Any addition, corrections to the minutes? None? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to second approve minutes of June 10th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say nay. Minutes have been approved. Next thing is, our only thing on the Board of Adjustment is a public hearing. Number 2024 dash zero one four requests to approve variance from the required 45-foot building height maintenance in the I-2 district, 203 feet, to construct a material processing building Cambria Real Estate Holdings LLC applicant and Great Plains Sand LLC property owner in section 33 of Louisville Township. And Marty, you want to present to the board?
Okay, if you can, I'll do that. If the board doesn't call back. While this item was presented to the Board of Adjustment, it was continued at that point in time due to some questions involving the future frontage road that would be constructed along the property. Didn't have a lot to do with the variance, but nonetheless, it was constructed or was continued. So on the screen is a site location map for the property. It's located in Louisville Township, just south of County Road 14, just east of State Highway 169 here, and just to the west of the U.P. rail line here, the Minnesota River Valley, Sand Creek, down in this area. There's another U.P. line that runs, you know, through the site here that kind of subdivided into multiple pieces. Scenario photo of the site. Property is zoned I-2, which is our heaviest industrial zone. Previous use on the property was a silica sand mine. There still is an interim use permit on the property for that silica sand mine. The silica sand mine had facilities in this area here, a processing plant down here, and obviously, based on the aerial photo, had some materials stored in this area up here, mined down here. The site has been reclaimed, so as far as site grading, that sort of thing, the site has been all cleaned up. Cambria is looking at buying the northern half of that mine site, which is about 88 acres, looking at plotting a parcel of property between the two railroads. This is 169 here. That would be roughly 65 acres in size, and they would be building a transload facility Frontage road will be constructed south from Smith Drive along the interior rail line here where they'd bring materials in via rail and truck, vast majority of via rail, down to the southern end of Cambria's property. As part of the overall site development, they will be building a rail-served warehouse quartz materials in particular. in this location here. Some materials would come in, I believe, in finished form, and they would be unmoted This is just under 80,000 square feet in area. from the railcars, loaded in storage containers and stored on the property. They'll also be constructing a processing facility in this area here. The processing facility is what requires the variance from our 45-foot height requirement. Other materials would be brought in and processed here. Here's a site plan of the property. The bulk of this structure is in the area of 63, 64 feet. Granted, it's on very large scale. See if I can... However, there is a portion on the northern edge of the building that's 135 by 72. Is there a way I can rotate this thing, Greg? That's 103 feet in height. And that height requirement from Cambria is necessary to have vertical drop to size So note this out. Okay. I'll just work with it the way it is. material and get the type of products they need at the end use. This here is the material feed area, so material that's fed into the plant will come from this location here into the plant. The plant will be developed in two phases, 45,000 square foot initially, and then at the end, the next phase would bring it up to 69,000 square feet. The storage yard for materials is to the east of the processing facility here, so where materials would be stored until there was a call by one of the facilities for that material. There's an existing, the existing plant on the property is located here. That existing plant is 100, approximately 110 feet tall. The Cambria is planning on using that for a different type of material processing. They won't be bringing that building online day one. However, they will be doing that within three years is what they've indicated. So through the conditional use permit, we're requiring that that building be upgraded and utilized within three years or it has to be removed from the site. So there'll be two processing facilities, one, the existing one at 110, and the proposed one at 103 feet. Township did hear this request at their meeting last Thursday night. They did recommend approval of the CUP and the preliminary plat subject to some modified conditions that you received here tonight. I assume by the approval of the CUP and the preliminary plat, they also recommended approval of the variance. Township supervisor is here nodding his head, so that was the case. Developer is here, as is the township, if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Marty. Any questions from the board regarding this variance?
I only have one question, Mr. Chair. Presumably, there's a fire sprinkler stampede system in this building since it exceeds that height.
The building official will be reviewing the structure. I don't know if we've got to the level of detail yet, Mr. Commissioner, that would dictate whether it'd be sprinkled or not.
Okay. That would be my question.
Marty, just a question, and you probably addressed that. Most of the material is going to come into this area by rail, then when it's processed, it'll probably be trucked offsite, south down to Cambria's main plant?
That is correct. Mr. Huber, it'll be stored in container cars.
Okay.
And as those plants need materials, depending upon the type of material, they would load from here and bring it down to their facilities.
Okay. Any other questions?
Chair, just to verify that they did commit to the frontage and baggage road or the baggage road?
Yes, Cambria has committed to constructing the frontage road from Smith Drive through their property. So that is committed to. We don't have engineering on those plans yet. We're still working with the railroad up on the northern end of the property here to determine if the existing crossing is okay or if we need to modify that to maybe have a 90-degree crossing of the railroad, because right now, we're at a skewing.
Because that was our biggest issue, was that frontage road, and that was committed.
Yep.
Thank you.
I just have one question regarding this existing building. You said it is already 110 feet tall. So why aren't they able to use it right now?
I'll have the applicant try to state why that building is being kept for a future processing, a future process versus brought online right now, day one, where they want to put up the new structure.
Thank you, Marty. Good evening. Good to see you all again. Thank you for having us.
State your name and sign in, please.
Yeah, Joel Peters. Cambria. So the height of the existing processing building is 110 feet tall. Vertical composition of that, the first 60 feet of it, is concrete silos, and then it's 50 feet of clear space above that. We need the whole 100 feet of clear space. So short answer is, it's not as, it's not usable for our processing operation on day one.
So what kind of future use do you see for this existing building?
Yeah, processing that fits within that height.
So that'll be different material altogether, the different process altogether?
It's a different product. Yep.
Different product. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? That is a public hearing. Anybody like to address the board regarding this variance? Please come to the podium, state your name and sign in. No one coming up? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I have a motion to second close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say nay. Now, what is your wishes regarding this variance?
Mr. Chairman, based on the criteria for determining variance, hardship listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the Cambria REH LLC variance request from the required 45 building heights to, in the 1-2 district, to 103 to construct a material processing building, and issuing that the township has issued approval.
Second.
I have a motion to second approve the variance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say nay. The variance has been approved. Now, anything else, Brad, for the board? Do I have a motion to close the Board of Adjustment?
So moved.
Motion to second to close? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Board of Adjustment is closed. Turning now to plating.
I call the order to the Scott County Plan Advisory Commission meeting for August 12th, 2024. The first items, roll call, any reductions?
Commissioner Hussein.
Present.
Commissioner Pika.
Here.
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Bonnoff.
Here.
Commissioner Hentges.
Here.
And Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Also present is Brad Davis, our planning manager. At the end of the podium here, next team is Greg Wagner, our principal planner, who's serving as the deputy clerk for the board this evening. Also in the audience is Greg Wagner, Nathan Hall, our associate planner, and Tom Wolf, our county commissioner, is right over there. We'll start with our first item this evening is the approval of the July 8th Plan Advisory Commission meeting minutes. The commissioners will have an opportunity to review the minutes. Are there any corrections, deletions, or additions to the minutes as presented? Okay, here we now entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the July 8th, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Robbins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Huber. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say nay. The variance has been approved. Now, anything else, Brad, for the board?
Do I have a motion to close the Board of Adjustment?
So moved.
Motion to second to close? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Board of Adjustment is closed. Turning now to plating.
I call the order to the Scott County Plan Advisory Commission meeting for August 12th, 2024. The first items, roll call, any introductions?
Commissioner Hussein.
Present.
Commissioner Pika.
Here.
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Bonnoff.
Here.
Commissioner Hentges.
Here.
And Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Also present is Brad Davis, our planning manager. At the end of the podium here, next team is Greg Wagner, our principal planner, who's serving as the deputy clerk for the board this evening. Also in the audience is Greg Wagner, Nathan Hall, our associate planner, and Tom Wolf, our county commissioner, is right over there. We'll start with our first item this evening is the approval of the July 8th Plan Advisory Commission meeting minutes. The commissioners will have an opportunity to review the minutes. Are there any corrections, deletions, or additions to the minutes as presented? Okay, here we now entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the July 8th, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Robbins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hentges. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. At this time, I'll open our consent agenda, public hearing, and all items listed are considered by the Planning Commission to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on this, on these items unless a Planning Commission board member or member of the public shall request, in which the event, in which the event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately. We have one item this evening on the consent agenda. It's number 2024 dash zero four three. It's request to approve the rezoning of 81.73 acres from A-1 Agricultural Preservation District to A-3 Agricultural Preservation Density District and preliminary plant of Warren addition consisting of two lots and three outlots on 81.73 acres. David and Connie O'Brien are the applicants and property owners in section 19 of Belle Plain Township. Would anyone like that removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Okay? I see no one. At this time, I will close the consent board. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Robbins. Second by Commissioner Huber. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
I will now entertain a motion to approve the single item on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, move. We approve the consent agenda as written.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robbins. First by Commissioner Huber. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
So that item has been approved this evening on the consent agenda. So if you're here for that item, that has been approved and will move forward. Our next item, first public hearing, is number 2024 dash zero three six. Request to approve an interim use permit to operate a sand and gravel mine on 28.97 acres, charge grading excavation LLC applicant and charge exchange LLC property owner in section five of Belle Plain Township. And I see that Marty Schmitz is on this, where I'll be making the staff report. Good evening, Mr. Schmidt.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners on the screen, you will see a site location map for the properties proposed for the interim use permit for mining. Property is located in section five of Belle Plain Township. Property is zoned A-3. Surrounding uses are predominantly agricultural. However, the city of Belle Plain is located a quarter mile to the west of the property. This is an aerial photograph of the site. On the aerial photo, you can see the parcel itself is 105 acres. They are looking at mining the northern 29 acres of that, of that site. County Road 64 runs along the northern, northern side of the mine site, and that would be what's used to access the mine. The property is zoned A-3 because the building site to the south here was broke off on a smaller parcel earlier this year. Here's a survey of the property that shows that building site being split off from the remainder of the property. So Lee Wright Shire has purchased the agricultural land, and the request is to mine those northern 29 acres. And with that brief introduction, what I'd like to do is turn the presentation over to Representative with Carlson McCain, who has been working with the applicant in setting up the mine request, to go through the details of the proposal. Once he is done, I will stand up and finish up with any closing comments.
Okay.
Thank you, Marty. Okay. Brandon Peterson with Carlson McCain. I'll sign it here. Consulting engineer with shard grading. So I'm going to have a few kind of just repeated comments here, but shard grading and excavation applied for an interim use permit to operate a sand and gravel mine on a parcel located in the northwest corridor, southwest corridor of section five, Township 112, range 24, in the parcel located north in Scott County. The application was submitted on May 24th, and the Belle Plain Township recommended approval of the application during its July 2nd meeting. A revised application was recently submitted on August 8th, which was updated to account for comments received from the first dismissal. The proposed mine lies approximately quarter mile east of the city of Belle Plain and is on the south side of County Highway 64 on a parcel with agricultural zoning. Non-metallic mining of sand and gravel is a permitted interim use, interim use in the agricultural zoning district. And so kind of just a few details of the mine are that proposed mining boundary encompasses 28.97 acres and follows county ordinances for setbacks and screening. Mining activities will generally consist of excavation, screening, crushing, and stockpiling. These operations will also include asphalt, concrete, recycling, for which a solid waste license will be obtained. What you're seeing here is a existing map from the planned set of drawings. No wash ponds are proposed with the IUP application. The existing ground elevation is approximately 860, and the bottom of the excavation will extend to no lower than elevation 820. Mining will not enter the water table. Mining falling within, stormwater falling within the mining boundary will not discharge the site, and all stormwater will be infiltrated. Switch over. These are proposed mining grades. Hull traffic will generally consist and generally access and leave the mine from County Highway 64 and travel to north or southbound Highway 169 to the west. Field entrance is located up at the northeast corner of the site. I don't know if you'll be able to see here, but that will be improved, and an access permit will be obtained for that activity. Screening berms and a lock gate will be used to maintain and prevent unauthorized access. Reclamation of the pit will include backfilling, slopes to a maximum of three to one, and re-spreading topsoil, then establishing vegetation. Reclamation will be achieved with clean imported soil and will be ongoing as areas are mined to completion. Reclamation conditions generally will create a depression in the surrounding grade, and all stormwater entering the created basin will be infiltrated. The site is located in the high susceptibility region of the city of Belle Plain's drinking water management area, and a portion of the mine is also located within the wellhead protection area. Mining of infiltration, mining and infiltration practices are not prohibited within the dwisma or wellhead protection area, though, but they do require a higher degree of engineering review and establishment of environmental controls. Protecting groundwater resources and the public health is of importance to shard grading, and three soil borings were drilled on-site to document the groundwater elevations and conditions of underlying soils. The shallow aquifer was documented between approximately elevations 813 to 817 across the site and flows to the northwest. This flow direction is generally the same as numerous environmental assessment worksheets for other sand and gravel mines in the neighboring vicinity, and is not quite the same as the lower aquifer down below, which flows to the west. The grades encountered of the groundwater generally flow to the northwest, not towards the drinking water supply wells. Since infiltration practices are proposed within the dwisma, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency guidance was followed to determine that there are no receptors within the one-year travel time of radius for the site, and infiltration is therefore acceptable. As stated before, mining grades are proposed to no lower than elevation 820, and this maintains some PCA standards of separation from the groundwater of three feet. The proposed mine adheres to the requirements of county ordinances and state and federal guidelines, and we accordingly request approval of the proposed interim use. Thank you for your time, and we'll take any questions.
Are there any questions from the board at this time?
Yeah.
Commissioner Robbins.
Yeah, remind me again, I think it's probably in the report, has Belle Plain seen this and have they approved it?
Yes, Belle Plain has been involved. They provided comments within the dwisma here, and the township has also been approved. It's approved at their meeting.
All right.
In one second.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I see who? The reclaiming part of it, you talk about in the report, it says it would be depending on how the land is going to be used and dictated by Belle Plain, I assume. Now, you're looking at going ag, which is a lot different to reclaim for ag versus for housing or commercial. Do you know what's going to happen there if you go on there, ag, and then they want to come in with commercial later? It could be a problem. Now, you know, uniform compaction, compacted right materials so the buildings won't settle and things like that. If it's ag, it's a field, no one really cares as much. What's your thoughts on that? Has the city given any input on that?
Not especially. There was one comment about right-of-way, which is for County Highway 64 expanding, and that's been accounted for, where the expanded right-of-way is kind of shown up here, and that's not been disturbed at all by reclamation grades. But yeah, agriculture would be possibly primary use. I would defer, I guess, to chart grading guides if there's any future plans for.
You're going to be raising grade how much after you take out the gravel? You raising grade 20, 30, 40 feet?
Probably on about three feet.
How much?
About three feet raised, so not much.
Oh, you're not raising grade much?
No.
You're just taking the whole site down?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hentges.
Commissioners, if I could just.
Chair.
So the updated plans that were submitted by Carlson McCain were submitted late on Thursday. They were emailed to you folks here this morning. The city received them on Friday, so there hasn't been a whole lot of time to actually look and review those updated plans. We also forwarded them to the Minnesota Department of Health. You know, the information that's, part of them is very positive, helps us make good decisions. The borings that were done are shown here on this plan, so you can see the soil borings that, if I can get the most there. So there's soil borings here, here, and there's another one to the south. The soil boring to the south, I believe, is the one where they located a till layer, mixture, a clay layer, so that you'd have a separation between the upper aquifer and the lower aquifer. The borings to the north, I think they hit a resistance, which they interpreted to be bedrock, and it was consistent with what was expected. So we do feel there's a layer between the upper aquifer and the lower aquifer here, which is beneficial in discussion later, today, with county environmental staff and Department of Minnesota Department of Health and the city. Staff still feels it's important that we do some groundwater monitoring in this area. There's a large volume of water that the city will be using that's going to continue to grow over time. This mine is going to be operational for 15 to 25 years. The city will likely need additional wells during those times, so some level of monitoring is felt would be appropriate here to protect that groundwater and provide information to the city when they're looking for future well sites.
Mr. Chairman, Marty, on this plan that you're showing on the, is that going to end up being just a big hole in the ground?
Right now, the end-use plan, what you see here is a depression. The bottom of the mine would be about 728 to 724, or 828 to 824. Surface elevation around there is about 860. So yes, it would be.
It's going to be a big hole in the ground, so someone that's going to come and develop is going to have to bring in material and engineer appropriately.
That is correct. Commissioner Huber, the applicant does have access to 105 acres total on this property, so they do have access to additional material to move around, to shape the property for future development, if, when it becomes part of an urban setting versus an agricultural.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hentges.
Marty, I think you're ahead of me, as usual. When you talked about the Department of Health, that was my question, because I thought your letter in here was a little disconcerting with all of the issues that they raised about water and about safety and that. When I read the.
Answer that you gave back, you referred to different parts of the report, and so I never really got an answer to each of those questions. So I'm going to ask you, Marty, do you feel like all of the questions from the Minnesota Department of Health were adequately addressed?
Yes, I do. We had a meeting this afternoon with the Department of Health, Environmental Health staff, city staff, to talk about the newer plans, the borings that were done, the cross-sections that were prepared, the information that Carlson McCain was able to provide on direction of groundwater flow, on time of groundwater flow, how long it would take to get to other wells. So we had a lot of really good information to look at that we didn't have.
Okay.
With fire plant sets.
Thanks.
Commissioner Hussein.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
You bet.
I was looking.
Commissioner Pika.
So it's always a concern of mine, the dust control. So being with no well on-site, is there a dust control plan?
Yeah.
Or is it a little early? Okay.
No, dust control was discussed in the resource management plan that was submitted with the IUP application, and that would generally be completed with water collected in an on-site infiltration pond. They're not proposing to have a well on-site to grab water, but there could be other sources that they might look at grabbing for using dust suppression. that they might look at grabbing for using dust suppression.
Whether pollution control recommends you follow then?
Yeah. They would be following an MNG forty-nine permit with the MPC, which chart grading already has. They would just be adding it to their current list of sites, and that does include air emissions and all that.
Thank you.
Commissioner, who's saying?
So, I have one question to Marty. In the document that you have sent, the environmental services says that the wash plant is not allowed. And then later on, it, she goes on saying that in future, if it is, pardon, becomes part of the project, then you do get a separate approval. So, I question the language of this, the wash plant is not allowed. If it is not allowed, why are we looking at future change that?
So, what we're, what we're looking at, Commissioner was saying, is impacts to groundwater, and if, if we have a wash plant, oftentimes they will pull groundwater to wash the sand, so you may have an open expression to the groundwater that they would pump from for that wash plant. So, we are concerned about opening up that groundwater without any surface protection to it. Right now, the mining is going to stop at elevation eight twenty, and as Mr. Peterson indicated, the groundwater elevations across the site are, I believe, eight seventeen to eight thirteen is what he said. So, we are stopping above that groundwater elevation.
So, that requirement will depend on the need of the project that is.
So, at, at this point, the, the applicants are indicating they don't need to have a wash plant at this site. I imagine just by screening the sand, they feel will be adequate to create the products they're looking for here. And if they would decide to have a wash plant in the future, it would require a reopening of the interim use permit. So, we'd be back in front of this board in another public hearing.
So, who, who decides about the need of the wash plant? The client?
Yeah, I assume the applicant would decide if they needed to provide that type of material that needed to be washed, and if they did, then they would be putting together an application that would have to come back through this process.
But here, the environmental services is saying it's not allowed.
So, the conditions that are drafted in the IUP that staff has prepared, we're indicating it's not allowed at this time.
Correct.
And just for clarification, there's a requirement in the conditions to require groundwater monitoring as part of operation of this, is that correct?
Yeah, so the, the conditions that are before you here tonight have condition number thirty-three that requires the operator to provide a groundwater monitoring plan that's acceptable to staff prior to county board action.
And that would be, that, that would be available to the county and the city as well?
Yes, there, any, any information on that would be available to the county, city. Our environmental health manager is here tonight. Also, we have representatives from the city of Belle Plaine here tonight, so, and I, I believe we also have representatives from Minnesota Department of Health, if you have any specific questions for those folks that are here to assist.
Okay. Just one thing, and maybe it's, remind me, how long is this going to go on?
I believe the timing was fourteen to.
Twenty-four years.
Twenty-four years, yes.
Fourteen to twenty-four years.
Yeah, depending upon market.
Hey, thank you. Commissioner.
I have another question. Who, who will come up with the plan to monitor the impaired water on, in the lakes and, or who will, whether it will be the county or the client?
So, the applicant would be responsible for generating the plan, the county would review it with assistance from the Department of Health, so it would have to be acceptable to the county and, at, at the end, before we take it to county board.
So, now, the question to client is, do you have any plan?
No, at this time, I would defer to chart grading to possibly speak on that.
Dan Chart with chart grading.
Commissioner, could you repeat your question for me?
Is there a plan by you to monitor the impaired water around the, the project that you have?
The NPDS permit requires us to do an annual inspection of the site and monthly inspections along with annual, or daily rainfall events, so that's part of the permit that we already will have obtained. As for the monitoring wells that Marty is speaking about, that just kind of got brought to us here today with their recommendations from their staff meetings. So, we're going to have to have Carson McCain come up with a monitoring plan and have staff review what they come up with for the monitoring.
So, I take it that the plan is still in the development stage? Is that, is that right?
Please say that again.
Right, right now, you do not have a plan?
Currently, we do not have a plan, as I've said, that staff from Scott County and the Department of Health just recommended that, that for a monitoring plan prior to this.
Are you working on that?
We will be, as of tomorrow. Like I said, we just were informed, informed of that right here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your clarification here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Introduce yourself.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioners, I'm Kate Slobodchik. I'm with the manager for the Environmental Services Department, and as you saw, a lot of material was coming into us late last week, and we did have a chance to talk to Nick Bono, the project manager. He wasn't able to attend tonight, but we did talk to him, Marty and I talked to him. It was Monday or Friday, and we told him the staff report had gone out, we were requiring the monitoring plan. He said, okay, get, he was going to give staff some time to actually go through all the material and then process that and then work together on what we would need in the monitoring plan. So, they haven't started the monitoring plan yet because staff haven't gotten into the new material enough to know what we would need, what we're going to ask of them.
Okay.
So, they know the one, they know what's needed, but they haven't gotten into what it would be yet.
It has to be put together before the recommendation goes before the county board.
Yes.
From our recommendation.
Correct. And then just, Commissioner's name, clarification, so I did write the note in there that a wash plant would not be allowed. In the application, the applicant said they didn't, they weren't going, they weren't proposing a wash plant. So, I just wrote that note because I wanted to make it very clear that should that wash plant ever come into play, need, that the operator was going to need a wash plant, they were going to have to come back in. So, it wasn't that they were asking for it and, and we were denying it, I just wanted to make it clear that whenever we start to get into that groundwater, even if it was for a wash plant, we'd have to then open the IUP backup.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marty, did you have anything else for your presentation?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, no, I think we covered pretty much everything in, in my report. I would stand for any questions you have.
Okay, are there any further questions at this point from the Commissioners? Okay, seeing none. This is a public hearing. If you would like to make comment on this application, just step up to the podium, and there's a little sign and sheet, just put your name on it, and you can start with your name, and make any comment you like.
Good evening, Commissioners, I am Dawn Meyer. I'm the administrator for the city of Belle Plaine. Thank you for having the public hearing this evening and allowing me to speak. There's been a lot of talk about the groundwater. This mine area is in a highly vulnerable area for the city of Belle Plaine. I'm going to give you a short information. I am not a hydrologist, nor am I a geologist, so technical questions I'll have to pass off to your experts. But this is in our drinking water management area. It also does a butt into our wellhead protection area. The city of Belle Plaine currently operates two wells for all of our drinking water. They are both in the same aquifer. They are very close in proximity to each other. We're in the process of setting up our third well, which is our backup well. Again, it is within about a four-block area. In the past twenty years, the city has drilled no less than eight test wells. We do have an issue in finding quality and quantity of water. There's a basalt fault that is found in that area, which inhibits our ability to go to other aquifers and other areas in order to obtain our drinking water. So, with that, I do appreciate staff's help and work on this. They've been very good and very helpful on that. We are asking for the monitoring well on-site just to ensure, since it is our only source of drinking water, and that the other conditions as requested through the Department of Health be followed, and that notification to the city as well of when the county receives it for any spills or any issues with the monitoring. So, the city is not a regulatory authority on this. We are not part of an OAA with Belle Plaine Township, so there is no city approval, so we're just offering comment and working with county staff. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Chris.
Regarding the overall developments, relatively close to the city, it's within about a quarter of a mile or so. I assume in the future it might be housing out there. I doubt if it'd be commercial, it'd probably be housing, I would guess. Now, there's going to be a big hole in the ground. It's going to be thirty feet below grade or forty feet below grade. That gives some flexibility on bringing decent material down the line, and you can control what's being put in there. Is that kind of the, a thought process, or maybe the city hasn't been involved with that, but?
Yeah, so the city is not involved in that. As I said, we don't have a current orderly annexation with Belle Plaine Township, so we haven't had comment on that. We did have some minor comments about the reclamation process, but their intent is to go back to agricultural and until, I think in our long-term plan, it is housing.
Yeah, I could just see if it's, if it's ag, you know, they can control what they have to do to bring it up to grade. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Tony Carter with Belle Plaine Township. As Don said, we do not have a active OAA with the city of Belle Plaine, and to your point of what the pit will look like when it's done, in Marty's presentation, just to the north of here, there are two active pits in Belle Plaine Township, and there's one in St. Lawrence, all within, I would say maybe a mile as the crow flies. The reclamation process and what will be left there is, is kind of pad-ready development and with the intention to go back to ag until, until development gets out there, but for right now, we're, we're, we're at the township and that's, we're just happy to have some business out there to help pay the taxes.
Mr. Chair, I just, a, a comment on that. You know, I'm always concerned about reclamation, how it's going to be done, but in this case, you're not doing any. You're just putting some topsoil on there, going to turn it to ag, and when it comes down the line, if the city comes in or whatever, you guys put housing in there to reclaim it, and they'll bring engineered fill-in and, and deal with that time, so you have that flexibility. It just seems kind of odd to have holes in the ground like that, just all over the place. It's kind of like, I, I have a cabin up north, and you see the big tachydyte pits all over, it's just kind of.
Well, it's a little different scale up there.
Of course.
I would also bring up like Bridle Creek development in Jordan, that was a big hole in the ground, and that's a pretty nice development. The Pearson property in Jordan, they're actually mining gravel in the city limits there right now. And they'll, they'll, they'll make that work, the developers will make that work.
Yeah, down the line, they'll have to raise grade twenty, thirty feet, they'll have to bring engineered fill-in, it's just the way it has to be, to put housing in there. But that's something twenty years down the road, I guess.
The need for gravel is here now, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your comments.
Chad Van Sloan, I live on Iago Boulevard, and I was just, if we keep letting all these gravel pits in, which I'm fine with because it's their land, I own ten acres, I go for a building permit, and I'm denied because I'm over my square footage. So, now, we're going to just let all these people come in, I think we need to start upping the square footage for people on their land to do more with their land. I mean, how are we going to keep the trucks coming from down sixty-four and going Iago? I mean, if they do, who's going to maintain that?
Right.
Are we going to make sure all the trucks go to town that way instead of going up sixty-four?
Yeah, they do have a route that they're supposed to follow.
Right, because I know on old one sixty-nine, they can't, like Valley can't go that way either. How are we going to monitor that?
Right. That comes up to the monitoring of the IUP, so.
So, to me, it's just, I, I don't care that they do it because it's their land, which I'm, I'm fine with, but if we're going to let these permits keep going, we need to up people that.
Monitor.
You know, and we need to up the permits for people to allow more building eligibility in, in a township.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's mine.
Any other questions or comments?
Tom, chart with chart grading. Just to kind of clarify some of the stuff that we did prior to, after we got through the township, we had a meeting with the township, city of Belle Plaine was, had some concerns about the water. We did have Geotech come out this last week. Their concern was, is there's that glacier till layer, which is, prevents hard groundwater going down into the actual aquifer. I was out there when they drilled, we drilled, you can see these two holes here.
We can't see you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Put it on that screen.
He'll show you how to do that. They, they can see you. We can't see.
I'm a dirt digger, so these computers are a little.
You got to point them out here on this one town.
Oh, gotcha, okay. So, these first two on the northern edge had drill repos, which was down to the bedrock, and then this one on the little farther south is where they hit that glacier till layer at sixty-some feet, which, that was Belle Plaine's at the time, their engineer and their biggest concern was that glacier till layer was there.
Right.
Looking on the, on here, you can actually see north of the pit, all of these lines here, they were contour lines, and this, where, where I'm at here, which is about ten feet below that creek line, is at an eight twenty, which is, is where we're going down to, that's our stopping limit. So, literally, up two hundred yards to the north, we're already at that level right now currently. That's where we feel, I mean, we don't want to contaminate nobody's water, we don't, I mean, that's something we don't want to have on our backs, which is why right now, we're not looking for a wash plant, we're not looking to go in the water. And that eight twenty is above that water table, and like I said, if, if what we do in that gravel pit is going to contaminate it at that eight twenty, it's been doing that for years, literally right across the other side of the road, and although we are in that dwisma, in that wellhead protection area, if you look at how them dwismas were calculated, they literally follow the county roads. So, we are on that northern, northeast side of it, but we all know the water doesn't follow the county roads in there, you know, it's just basically, we've drawn on a map, broad spectrum, which is why we got Geotech out, because it is a concern, you know. The two northern parts, one thing to add to that, just to kind of give you a direction of which way the water is going, city is over to the left here. These first two, I believe, were two feet, I'd have to look at the borings, but I know they were at least two feet, the water table was lower here than they were to the south, which indicates the flow of that water is going to the north, which is complete opposite way of all their wells right now, which I would assume, I mean, the river's to the north, like I said, this creek bed is to the north, that's, that perch water's just draining out there, so. Obviously, you know, if there's need for a, a wellhead monitoring, you know, we're open to that. I just feel at this time, that ten feet, you know, staying above that water table, we're literally extracting the materials there and we're not introducing anything to them, but obviously, you know, like I said, if the health department, we're open to putting a plan together on that, but just to give you a little background on.
Mr. Chair, I have questions on the soil boards, the soil boards. The northern ones hit mostly granular soil down to the sandstone?
Yeah, so these two northerly ones were sand and gravel, and then when they hit drill repos, it was down to either big rock that they couldn't drill through or bedrock is what they.
Close to the sandstone, so.
Yeah.
And the southern one, did you get down to bedrock or you just hit the clay till? Or you just hit the clay till?
Yep, stopped at that sixty-seven feet, I believe.
Well, the city likes that clay till there as a separator for aquifer.
Correct.
But it might not be consistent across your site.
Yeah, I guess we'd have to drill...
Drill more holes, let's see.
All the holes, yeah.
Okay.
Which they, they figured that till was there, providing other wellheads in the areas, why they knew what was there, but...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Yep, thanks for your time.
Hi, I'm Annika Munsell with the Department of Health. Um, I just wanted to state just a couple of things, clarifications. So one, um, this is within the high vulnerability of Belle Plains dwisma, our drinking water supply management area. And we do that because we know that it's easier and more cost-effective to protect water before contamination gets into it than trying to treat it after the fact. And PCA has infiltration guidance for within these high-vulnerability dwismas. And creating a depression within the dwisma is essentially creating an infiltration basin. It's kind of how we're looking at it. And so there is that clay layer on the southern part of the site, but we weren't able to confirm that it was there in the northern part. And part of the reason we did that is because there is a well just across the street that is also in that northern part, or also doesn't have that till layer. And so, we, I haven't had a great chance to look at the data yet, and I am so thankful to the staff here at Scott County that they're gonna do this groundwater monit- monitoring plan. I think that is really going to help. And the other thing I will say is the reason that the wellhead protection area and the dwisma is shaped the way it is is because the, the gradient of water flow in this area can change, based on kind of what's going on in the area. So, climate can change it, um, pumping in the area can change it. And so, the last time Department of Health did a plan, they said, "Well, it could be coming from the south, or the water could be coming from the west." There's some really unique geology in this area, and that's why the wellhead protection area looks like a quarter of a circle. And so, that's why it's like that. So it is, we would like the groundwater monitoring plan because it is possible that something, through likely no fault of the, um, proposer, people dump things, stuff happens, you know? We just want to try and prevent anything from happening, while also allowing people to do business. And so, the groundwater monitoring spill prevention plan, all those things will help give us peace of mind and protect the aquifer. Thanks. Any questions?
Any questions?
Well, uh, I just, um, groundwater, I assume, is going to northwest towards the Minnesota River. I assume that's the predominant direction of this area.
Yes-ish, um, because of the way the river is, it could be going northwest, or it could be going a little bit more toward the west.
Okay, and it's going towards the river, of course.
Yeah, it's going towards the river.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, that's very helpful.
Hi, Pam Welch, and I live on Iago Boulevard, so I'm kind of concerned about this too. But my main concern is on County Road sixty-four. You've got these trucks, they're gonna be... These trucks are gonna be coming in and out of this pit, and there's some hills on either side of sixty-four. I'm concerned about safety, that these trucks are gonna be pulling out, and then you're gonna get somebody coming up over the hill. How is that gonna... Any suggestions on how you're gonna prevent any accidents or anything like that from happening?
Well, I, I, it is a county road, and they have certain ratings for them on, on that, you know, on being able to accommodate traffic. There is a, uh, projected number of ADTs, average daily trips from that site. And they have like worst condition on how many there are, and then just what they expect average to be, and how many actual vehicle trips are. And when you look at road capacities, um, it, certain roads are designed for certain capacities, and that's why, you know, county roads are higher than usually township roads. And then state highways are usually higher than that. And the ADTs that are, be able to be accommodated by that. And I think staff's gonna get up and respond a little bit to this. But that's, that's part of that, about how much that road can handle and stuff. It, it will be more traffic than there is there now, 'cause there's nothing there now, right?
Right, yeah.
So, so there's essentially, you know, one farm or something there now. So there'll be more traffic than there is, but it's whether the road can be, uh, can handle that road. So that's kind of the answer on that, but I'm sure staff will respond to you here too.
Right, it's not so much the extra traffic. It's like if you've got a slow-moving, full sand truck pulling out, and you've got one person doing fifty-five coming up over that hill, who's gonna win?
Yeah, and, and the sight distance from the entrance to the, to the, um, pit, that's gonna be there between the crest of the road, that, that is important. And I'm sure they'll address that for you. That's, that's a good point.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the, the Highway Department did look at the site. Hopefully that, so here, here's a view of County Road sixty-four, uh, approaching from the west. So you've got pretty good sightlines approaching to, from the west. And then here is a, a view approaching from the east. So it, it does have fairly good sightlines to it at, at the approach. Uh, an access permit is being required of the applicant because we're changing from agricultural use, obviously, to a, to an industrial. So they'll take a closer look at that and make sure that, um, it does meet those sightlines. But they've already been out there and looked at some of this and are comfortable with it.
Thank you.
Here, Marty, I mean, I assume if they wanted to, they could put a sign up saying, uh, slow traffic or something like that on the road or something like that.
Yeah, trucks hauling slower traffic. And I, I imagine they could also put a sign up that shows haul roads so that their customers, uh, have some idea which, which way to go avoid gravel township roads, um, where, where you could have more impacts to those roads and try and keep people on the paved county roads and the state highways.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Over. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Robbins, second by Commissioner Pica. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
This time, I'll entertain a motion from the item before us.
Well, Mr. Chair, I just would make a comment on this. You know, generally, I'm, I'm always nervous when things happen close to groundwater. But I'm convinced and satisfied that there's been a lot of work done on this project by the state, by the county, by the township, by our staff, and by the developer. And so, uh, and especially the monitoring, the well monitoring, then gives me some comfort. Is, you know, the, the administrator said, "That's our, that's our drinking water," you know? And so, um, I, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm gratified that there's gonna be so many things done to make sure that, uh, the water remains clear. Just a discussion item comment.
Okay. Commissioner Chris.
My comment is that this, uh, uh, they need to have a plan for the water impairment development added to this. Now, I, um, I am not satisfied with what I see right now. Uh, the, uh, there, there's no plan right now. So I need to put a condition here for approval of the, the project that they will have a plan to mitigate the water impairment.
It, it is required by, uh, uh, the thirty-third requirement at the very back, that they have a approved groundwater ring.
I was looking at that.
Yeah, at the very last there, number thirty-three there, of the, um, of the conditions of approval before we would send that forward to the county board. The very last one does require that they have a groundwater ring, groundwater monitoring plan.
Mr. Chairman, in addition to condition, uh, that condition actually in the permit, in conditions to be satisfied prior to county board action, indicates that the applicant shall prepare a groundwater monitoring plan acceptable to county staff. So they need to prepare that and present it to us, and we, we'll work with them on what that needs to entail.
Right.
How, how detailed it needs to be, and we'll get that done before board action. Also requires a spill remon- spill responsible and acceptable to county staff. And I know they've, they've worked on that, and we'll take a closer look at that here between now and board action, see if we need any changes to that.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, um, based upon the checks and balances that we have for groundwater protection, I motion, make a motion, based on the criteria for approval and conditions listed in this staff report, I recommend approval of the interim use permit. We're charred grading an excavation to operate a sand and gravel mine, knowing that the Belle Plaine County Board, Town Board has recommended approval of this request.
Second.
I have a motion, and a second before. Is there any questions before I call for the motion? All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much for all the input that everyone offered this evening on this item before us. Our next item is a number twenty-two-four-dash-twelve, request to approve a conditional use permit to add more than one thousand cubic yards of fill to the flood fringe as part of site improvements for Valley View Industrial Park, JMH Land Development LLC applicant, and Jordan Gravel LLC property owner in section eight and section seventeen of Sand Creek Township. And making the presentation this evening is our associate planner, Nathan Hall. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, and good evening, Commissioners. The, previously, uh, last month, the, uh, this commission heard the rezoning and preliminary plat request. And, um, that item, there was a public hearing that was closed. There was discussion, and the item was tabled. Uh, it was determined there was need to be more information regarding, uh, variety issues, particularly related to lots one and two, including items related to the right-of-way, related to the floodplain on the site. And, uh, so I will, uh, speak more briefly on, on some of that and get more into the floodplain here. But I'd like to give a little bit of overview for, um, for the record and for the benefit of those here tonight. The second property here is located in Sand Creek Township off of Valley View Drive. Uh, there is a, uh, we do see Sand Creek running through the far side of the property here. The area proposed for development is up here along Valley View Drive. Uh, the site, as you can see, it's largely open, uh, and agricultural land. And, uh, here in this property, included some site photos. These photos were taken back towards the beginning of July here, when the flooding was towards the, uh, towards the peak. And on the northern part of the site, which if we're here, we'd be, I'm sorry. If we're here, we'd be looking, uh, this photo's taken from about this area here, looking north towards the scale facility. And so on the northern edge of the site here, we see that there is quite a, uh, more defined topography here. So it is higher up the building area of the site, and then, as it gets down to the lower parts of the site, there is a more dramatic drop-off there. Uh, along the, uh, southern part of the site, so this is looking south, um, the small grove of trees is over by, propose lots three and four, the rear corner of that. Um, this is that lower area that more gradually, um, drains down to the, uh, the lower areas of the site, and is the area where the floodplain fill would be, would be proposed here. Uh, we do see flooding here, this is that same grove of trees, so the rear property line would continue along the back here. That area would be for stormwater. Floodplain mitigation would be further over here, those areas. Here we have a rendering of the site. It is a seven-lot development. Um, the lots do meet the size requirements for the RBR district. They also meet the, um, width requirements for that district. Uh, what the, uh, applicant is, is proposing, they are proposing, uh, septic sites, generally towards the front of the property, uh, so that they have access to the, uh, to future connection for public water and sewer. Uh, on this plan, we do see some changes here. We do see that there is a new area for, get to a closer... Uh, one of the, uh, recommendations from the, uh, from the township was to have, um, right-of-way dedicated for a twenty-mile-per-hour curve for the railroad crossing. And so that is being shown now on the, on the plat documents. Uh, there is also, uh, at this time, they provided a, they have provided a landscaping plan, which is more detailed than what was required. Um, there will need to be, um, screening provided along this area of the property, and that's something that would be, uh, reviewed and determined at the time that a user would come in to use that site. And so they will be applying for an administrative use permit, or, uh, depending on the use, or a conditional use permit, depending on the use. And so the landscaping and screening would be reviewed at that time. Uh, this is really the only area of the, of the site where it abuts to residential property. Uh, the property, uh, did go through review by the Natural Resources Department. Any, uh, conditions included in the manual do need to be addressed prior to board consideration, and have been added as conditions to the, um, to the request. The township, uh, has now met, um, and they did have that requirement for that additional right-of-way, which the applicant has now addressed. The City of Jordan provided a, uh, comment letter, uh, where they wanted to see additional information regarding the, um, potential of these sites of these lots to connect into, uh, the city water mains, the city sewer system, when this property would be annexed in the future. And, uh, the applicant has provided, um, comment regarding that, how the, uh, site would connect into that, how they would have, how they would be able to connect in and feed in the system by gravity. Through the, uh, through the further review of this project, it was determined that there would need to be a conditional use permit application as well. The conditional use permit, because they are adding additional fill in the floodplain, beyond a thousand cubic yards, that is not being used to elevate a structure. It is also being used to elevate, uh, the outdoor storage yards and other areas. Uh, they do need to provide, uh, they did need to apply for a conditional use permit application. And so that is a public hearing that is here tonight. And, uh, so there is, this area is the area that's being classified as flood fringe. And so there is area that is floodway, uh, that also exists on the site. That's not in the area of the site where development's being proposed or where fill is being proposed. The area, um, where the fill's being proposed is in the flood fringe. And, uh, the flood fringe is a remainder of the floodplain that is lying outside of the floodway. And, uh, in an earlier submittal, the applicant provided an application that showed, uh, nearly a, um, uh, two-to-one ratio. Uh, they showed that one-point-eight-nine cubic yards of material removed from the floodplain for every one cubic yard of fill added. And, uh, the proposed floodplain alterations were reviewed by Scott County staff. And it was, um, uh, it was determined that, um, that level of fill was not, or that level of compensation, uh, was not necessary. And so these are the areas where it was shown by the applicant that there would be floodplain mitigation areas here, for that additional storage in the floodplain for, to compensate for the fill that's being added. Um, after review, uh, by Scott County staff, it was determined that some of those floodplain mitigation basins there were, uh, could be removed, and so... there were, could be removed, and so the, so the new plan does still show that there is, even with less mitigation ponds there, it does show that the, there is no rise through the modeling that was done by Carlson McCain. It actually shows it decreasing slightly in a narrow area here of the property. And so with the, with these revisions, we do have a new memo from the Natural Resources Department, and that was provided here earlier today, and that was provided in the, in your green folders there, Commissioners. And in it, it is noted that the applicant has demonstrated the ability to meet the requirements identified in the memo. And we do have our floodplain administrator, Scott WMO staff here tonight to answer any questions regarding, regarding the floodplain. The DNR has, has no comments regarding the request. And we do have some members of the public here that would like to speak to this tonight during the public hearing period. But we have staff here, we have the applicant here as well to answer any questions for the Commissioners. And staff is recommending approval per the conditions and criteria that are listed in the staff report, and I'll certainly stand for any questions that you would have for me.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Any questions? Commissioner Robbins?
Yes. You know, we've talked about this project a long time. Can you just go back now and tell me kind of succinctly what changed over the last month? I mean, it seems like there's been some things that have been done. Am I right? I mean, that have been pursuant to the last meeting. Can you go over those again, please?
Yep. Correct, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Robbins. So the applicant has addressed a couple of different things with this plan. So they are addressing the concerns with the right-of-way. At last month's meeting, it was very early in the process where the township is really just getting into the design phase for the roadway improvements and the railway crossing. And so the applicant has now been able to show changes to the plan that show that the additional right-of-way will be dedicated to accommodate that new crossing. Another thing is that the floodplain mitigation has been worked out, and so they have now shown how the floodplain mitigation will work on the site, the amount of compensatory storage that they will have on the site to compensate for the fill that they are adding.
Mr. Chair, Nathan, or maybe the floodplain person could speak to it. I'd just like the definition between floodplain and floodplain fringe. Floodplain, I assume, happens every three or four years, like a three or four-year flood. Fringe must be higher, has to be like 20-year, 30-year, 40-year. Could someone answer that?
Yeah, yes. Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I will have our floodplain staff answer.
Perfect.
Good afternoon. Well, good evening. Apologize. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, my name is Vanessa Strong. I am your Water Resources Supervisor for Scott County. I'm also your Administrator of the Scott WMO, and I'm also your floodplain administrator. So I get to wear lots of hats, and I really enjoy it. Floodway is generally the area that is considered standard flooding zone. It's where you would normally expect there to be a flood during, under normal conditions. The flood fringe, it fluctuates a little bit, but it is a pretty common flood area. So when we look at administering our floodplain ordinance, floodplain ordinances generally say we're not going to put any structures within the floodway whatsoever. We're pretty aggressive on our floodway and flood fringe as well. So we usually don't allow any structures in the flood fringe either. Now, there's also that 500% chance of annual flooding. That's the orange area. That's the like fringe, fringe, I don't know really what it's called. But, and that we do allow some development in, but it's generally how we administer the three different areas. So our current ordinance was updated in about 2021, when FEMA came up with new maps. And so our current floodplain ordinance is pretty aggressive, and it's also very long. So trying to follow, any applicant trying to follow our floodplain ordinance, it's definitely met with a challenge. So it's certainly a lot of work to work with them to kind of follow what's going on.
I'm just curious, in the flood fringe, I understand floodplain area, you're concerned that probably happens every third or fourth year. But flood fringe, do you estimate that as a 30-year flood, 40-year flood? There has to be a way to estimate that.
There is. Off the top of my head, I'm not remembering off the top of my head. I just go based upon the base flood elevations. I go, I go based upon contours and things like that.
I understand, but then there has to be an elevation that's in the flood, you know, during different flood events.
Yep.
That comes up to a certain elevation, that's what you call flood fringe.
Yep. It changes from water resource to water resource. So the flood fringe, in this case, is for like Sand Creek, in this part of Sand Creek. It actually changes for different reaches of Sand Creek. So the actual elevation that sets the boundary of the flood fringe is actually different for different creeks and rivers and wetlands and lakes within the county. So that's why off the top of my head, I'm not remembering what the actual one is.
It's probably a 30- or 40-year flood, something like that. I have another question on the HERC model.
Good question, though.
The HERC model. A big issue in filling into a flood fringe is storage. That's been taken care of, right? The storage issue?
Yes. So again, our current ordinance is pretty aggressive. It allows staff to administer additional conditions for every CUP that comes forward, and we always require a two-to-one to start with. They have to be able to show whether or not they can provide two-to-one compensatory storage. So for every one foot they fill, they have to provide two feet. And then based upon what they're able to show, we review that and determine what's actually reasonable. We would never just do a one-to-one. We always ask for more.
So they met that standard?
Well, they didn't mean two-to-one. That did not, that did not seem very reasonable. They put based upon the available area. However, they certainly went above and beyond one-to-one.
Okay.
So they're like, it's like one and a half and change.
I just had one other question here. This is, do additional soil borians show about infiltration?
Correct.
And where groundwater as well?
Yep.
In this area, groundwater is going to fluctuate with the creek, because groundwater comes up right away. It's all sand soils. So it's going to come up right away, come down. So you're just looking at normal water level, what the typical water level is?
Right. We're looking at like the average groundwater level for this area, yeah.
Not during flooding.
Yep. And asking for soil borians in the compensatory storage areas, again, it's a little above and beyond to be really, really protective of the groundwater resources. It's not going to be any stormwater or contaminated polluted water that would be infiltrating in this area. It's literally going to be creek overflow. But again, because we are always very protective of our resources and our groundwater in this area, we still employ, we still employ that three-foot separation, just like we would for stormwater.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. More questions?
Thank you very much. That's very informative. Did you have anything else?
I don't have anything else to add, Mr. Chair. If anybody in the commission would have any question.
Very good. This is a public hearing. If you'd like to make comment on this application before us, please come up to the podium. There's a sign-up sheet, and please start your comments with your name.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
My name's Zach Perkel. Is there a way to get the document camera thing to work again? I don't know.
Sure. They'll help you out with that, sir.
Okay, very good. No problem. Very good. Okay. Whoops. Kind of making a mess up here, I guess. Okay. It's not good. Oh, look at that. Okay, very good. Hi, I'm Zach Perkel. Some of you'll remember me from last time. I'm purchasing the property to the south of the development from Mary and Larry's lake, and I plan to build a home there. I grew up spending a lot of time on this property, and I hope to continue to be able to enjoy the natural beauty of this area. I'll start off with just reiterating a couple of my concerns from the last meeting. I still don't think that the land use is compatible with the adjacent uses, this industrial development. Does not fit with the agricultural, institutional, and residential uses that are abutting it. It's all natural open space and farm fields, residential. There's nothing industrial out there right now, so this doesn't fit, in my opinion. Additionally, as we've talked about, the land floods very often. It is not suitable for development without extreme alteration, and we're concerned about the effects that the floodplain alterations will have on our property and other properties in this area. I'm also concerned about the impacts that this development will have on the groundwater, especially considering the high water table, as we've just talked about a little bit. I believe that the development will have a detrimental effect on water quality in general. Overall, I think that this development will be a deterrence to existing land uses for a number of reasons, including the visual and noise pollution, increased traffic in a residential area, and the environmental impacts that it will have. I'd like to move on to a couple of comments that I have, just as responses to some, some of the things that were mentioned at the last meeting, and at this one too, I guess. We talked about how high Sand Creek was when a lot of this flooding is happening, and I know Mr. Huber was asking about that 500, or the 100-year flood, or the flood fringe. This happens like every year out here. This is not a 30-year event. That flood fringe is filled up very often, and I think that's important to note. There, I mean, we've been talking about how this filling in the floodplain is a normal practice, and I know that the Natural Resource Department and everyone is doing their best to make this compensatory storage area and reduce the impact, but this is not a sustainable practice to do this filling in the floodplain, and I'm opposed to it. So I'll move on to some new concerns that I have. One concern, I don't know how to, I'm going to try to zoom this thing in, but I might, document camera. I don't think I'll be able to do, oh, yeah, it's the easy button. Couldn't figure that one out, though. In some of the, I don't know if it's on this one, in some of the documents proposed by the developer, they're showing this line of trees right here as remaining, trees that will remain. They're not the property of the developers, though. They're on our, along our driveway there, and I don't know if that's being used as screening or what the, why it's called to remain, but it's not for the developer to take out. So I'm just a little bit confused about that. And some of the trees have been taken out because they're dead, and we've been trying to trim stuff back. So just a note there. I know we've kind of already talked about it, mitigation areas, the three-foot separation from groundwater. Just a kind of comment, we have some fence posts that are at that same, I think it's the 728 elevation that a lot of those compensatory storage areas are planned at, and there's water 18 inches below the ground right there, in a pretty similar proximity to where some of those storage areas are planned. And I'm just concerned about the feasibility of how big those might grow, considering that, you know, if they can't go very deep, how giant are these compensatory storage ponds, or whatever we want to call them? How big are these going to be, and what kind of impact is that going to have on the general appearance of the land? I understand that this may be feasible from an engineering standpoint, but it just seems like a lot of work and a lot of alteration for a pretty minimal gain, in my opinion. And additionally, as, as we see these flood levels arising every year, getting higher and higher, there's going to be a point where this whole development is, you know, floodwaters are going to start encroaching on first the parking lots, and then it'll be the buildings, and then what do we do then? We have an underwater development. It's getting higher and higher, and if we only build to the, you know, minimum flood elevation, it just doesn't seem very smart to me. I'm going to go on to, the plans for the road don't make much sense to me. They seem to cut off, that's our driveway along the tree line there, and then the neighbor has a, you know, driveway there as well. I don't know how we're supposed to get there after this giant S-curve is entered. We have a really sharp hairpin turn, maybe? I don't even, not sure how that's going to end up working, but it, it seems like it's only benefiting the developer and not really the property owners or other people, you know, in this area. So that doesn't track very well with me. I don't even know. It totally removes our frontage. We already, you know, the lot was made before all these zoning restrictions wanted to affect, but it's totally removing all of our frontage on a public road, and it'll remove our neighbor's frontage on a publicly maintained road, or whatever they call that as well, or whatever that's worth. The conditional use permit requirements to state that the project is not going to have a burden on public infrastructure, traffic from heavy trucks hauling materials and equipment in and out are going to cause damage to the gravel road, and they're going to burden the city of Jordan's road, or whatever other roads they connect to. So that is a concern of mine as well. Pretty much towards the end of having to listen to me. During the last board meeting, at the county board meeting, I know they talked about 20% of farmland in Scott County has been lost to development, and this is pretty much turning like 70 or whatever acres of usable farmland into, what, 37 acres of industrial park, and then a bunch of big ponds, it seems like. It doesn't, not sure why we would do that. So I guess with that, I would request that the commission deny the CUP rezoning and primary plat, and barring that, I would really like to see the denial of lots one and two, keeping development out of the floodplain and increasing the distance from the existing agricultural and residential uses in the area. So, thank you. I appreciate you letting me speak.
Thank you for your comments.
Hey, Nathan. Thank you for helping me with the computer. I'm going to sign in. Hey, Commission. I'm going to sign in, and then I'll, I'll have some thoughts for you guys.
Okay.
All right. Let's do this. It's always weird working on a different laptop. Let me make this nice and big. Oh, did I hit the right button? Did I hit the right button? Hit the right button. Hi. So my name is Katie Sawyer. I'm back again from last month. I'm a Scott County resident. I was born and raised here in Shakopee, and after college up in Duluth, I decided to move back because I genuinely love this county. I love what's happening. Pretty passionate about it, honestly, and I think bringing more young people back who grew up here is what this county needs. As Zach mentioned, we're currently in the process of purchasing the parcel to the south of the proposed development site, where we're really hoping to build our home. I'm a city kid who's kind of turned into like a farm person. Very unusual. I don't know if anyone here watches The Pioneer Woman on Food Network. She's kind of living my dream of being like a secret rancher one day, which is funny, because I'm an accountant by day, and I love it. So that's why I'm here. I'm interested. We're looking to build a house right behind this. Let's just kind of get into it. And I have most of the same concerns I had last month. I'm going to talk a lot about compatibility. That's my primary concern. I have some information about flooding I'd like to talk about. Then I want to talk about infrastructure and what we're going to do to the S-curve. I know the township engineers here, I'd love to talk to you after this about this, because I have a lot of safety concerns about what's happening out here in this part of our county, starting out with compatibility. Part of the criteria for approval asks you to consider compatibility with current and future land uses on adjacent parcels, as well as compatibility with the Scott County comp plan. I understand this is compatible with the comp plan because it's been reguided, but I have a really hard time understanding how that regiding is actually compatible with the actual current and future land uses. So what I've done here to try to make it, I'm a very visual person. I learn best by seeing. So I actually took a little drive down Valley View this last weekend, and I took some pictures so we could see what this area really looks like, so that we can understand maybe what is and isn't compatible. So you could see the proposed development site. I've shaded it in blue. It's a little bit hard to see on the screens here. And then I've kind of called out some notable properties that surround it. So when we look to the north, we see scale. It's a beautiful historic building. It's institutional. I understand a lot of like county meetings and things happen out there, but it is an absolutely gorgeous historic building that's been in our county for a long time. Then you'll also note to the north, if you look at the county GIS maps, you'll always see all this orange. All that orange you're seeing, all of that is land that's owned by U.S. Fish and Wildlife. It is part of our Minnesota Valley National Wildlife Refuge, which was established, I feel like, more than 50 years ago by U.S. Fish and Wildlife to protect critical habitat and animal species in the state of Minnesota from encroaching developments like this one happening. And now we see a development is being proposed right in their backyard, as U.S. Fish and Wildlife is attempting to continue buying up more of this land here to continue expanding and protecting it. One of my favorite things to do out there when I have kind of a long day at the office, I sit in front of a laptop all day on Teams meetings. It's hard. I did it today. When I need a little break, I like to drive out there, and I like to look at birds. I've gotten really into birding recently. It's kind of a weird hobby, but it's a beautiful area. There's two eagles that are nesting out there on Sand Creek. I love watching them hunt and fish out there. I love seeing the birds. That's one of the coolest things about this area is the wildlife that we get to see. I love that it's accessible to people in the community. I think it helps make people excited about being here in the county. It gets kids excited about being outside. excited about being outside. So I think that's a really special area here. Continuing our journey down Valley View, you'll see to the east of the development, there's more what I would consider institutional. We have, it's like the metropolitan mosquito-controlled people, the people who spray for mosquitoes. Out there, you can see, it's incredibly hard to see their building, actually. They've done a great job of screening that property to make it really fit in with the residential uses around there. It's very hard to see what they're doing from the road, and I really appreciate that screening that's been done. Then we also have the Scott County Burn Tower. They do the fire department training out there. I understand, I've never actually seen it in use, but it would be cool to see them light that thing on fire sometime, probably. And then we also have the Sand Creek Business Park. I understand that we recommended that to go for the county board for approval. I don't believe the county board has voted on that. So currently, the largest piece to the east of this development is just open field. I don't even think it's agriculture, it's simply just like field, prairie land. So that's what we're looking at to the east. To the south, that's where I'm most interested. That's probably where my home's gonna end up being. I don't know if you could see the mouse on your screen, maybe not. It's gonna be right in that corner there, at the end of the driveway, which is the long skinny strip. You can see, I put some pictures up there. It's completely undeveloped, it's a hayfield. That picture on the bottom right was actually from this weekend. We are cutting and baling hay out there. It's very much agriculture. We will continue to cut and bale hay out there if we live there, but that's sort of what's going on. You can see, it's very beautiful, it's very natural. We intend to build only one very small portion of it, and then to leave it as natural as possible, because it is really truly a beautiful treasure here in our county. So that's what we're recommend to the south down Valley View. If we keep going down all the way to the west, you can see, I've called out two particular residential parcels, because they are the ones that like most directly above this, but you'll note this larger section where there's all the little triangles and rectangles, those are all houses. Those are people who live there, some of them have barns and horses in their backyards, but it's just people who live there. They're simply houses like you might see anywhere in Shakopee or any other city in the county. You can see, it's literally just houses. It's people that live there, we're not industrial people. It's residential. A lot of the houses are close to the road, we have a lot of trees, but it's just a quiet residential neighborhood. So, anyway, with that, I have a number of concerns about how this is compatible, because in my mind, industrial, I understand it's technically rural business reserve, but we're calling it an industrial park, so I'm gonna refer to it as industrial businesses, since that's what we would like to call this development. To me, it's really hard to understand how industrial developments are compatible with residential ones, especially when we're essentially building resident, or industrial buildings in people's backyards. It's really hard for me to understand. I have a number of concerns about noise, I have concerns about pollution, I have concerns about safety. The first ones I have is primarily related to public health, that's something that we don't really talk about, but obviously, a development of this size is going to impact this area in the county for a long time to come. When we actually look at the research that's been done on building industrial developments in residential areas, we find that twenty percent of the U.S. population's exposed to unhealthy noise. You might think it's just noise, what does that do? They've actually found that exposure to unhealthy noise levels, especially in your residence, is correlated with a higher incidence rate of heart disease. That's a really hard correlation to make in a lot of people's minds, but noise disrupts our sleep. When you don't sleep, you don't feel well, you don't live well. It also disrupts your ability to wanna be outside exercising, wanting to do healthy things and connecting with nature, can increase stress levels, all of that can cause heart disease. We've also, they've also found through research that mortality rates are increased in the communities that directly abut industrial zones. That's due to pollutants, it's due to dust, it's due to things like noise. It's incredibly concerning that, you know, people die more because we decide to build industrial right in their backyard. We also find increases in chronic stress. Anyone here who knows me knows about the last thing I need more in my life is chronic stress. You can see why chronic stress, it causes high blood pressure, gives people strokes. They actually found chronic stress causes asthma. That's about the last new thing I need going out of my life is asthma. If you're wondering where these numbers came from, it's from the World Health Organization, it's from a, a research paper that I believe was done out at Georgia Tech, uh, as well as information from Mayo Clinic and the American Physicians Association, who tells us that this is what happens. In addition to just the fact that industrial sites generally tend to kill people faster, it's also horrible for your property values. They've done an extensive research, uh, also from the great state of Georgia, crazy stuff they're doing down there, about what this does to property values. They've found within a point eight-five mile radius around here is what they call the area of impact. That's where property values are directly impacted from industrial developments. They've found that even just announcing the potential for building an industrial park in a residential area can drop property values immediately between four and a half and seven and a half percent. That drop continues as you, as you build and develop the land, it continues until it will bottom out, and then eventually, maybe a decade or two later, they will continue to increase. But that is particularly in this almost mile radius that surrounds the development that we're talking about. The great news is, when they look at this, industrial parks can be good neighbors when they're thought out well, when they're planned well, and when neighborhoods are included in that conversation. And part of what they've found is if you create an almost third of a mile radius around an industrial park as a buffer zone, and you include green space and trees, and you really try to protect that area, these negative impacts on property values and public health almost disappear. Now unfortunately, I'm gonna go back, when we look at this, we don't see any sort of buffer zone. I mean, lot one is going to directly run all the way along the property line of residential use. It is going to be literally in these people's backyards. Their front windows and front doors are going to look directly onto the lot one building. That's incredibly concerning to me. I understand, I don't believe that neighbor's here tonight, I know he has a lot going on, so I don't wanna speak on his behalf, but as somebody who's gonna, you know, live to the south hopefully one day, it's incredibly concerning to do that. So for me, when I'm looking at this, not great. I know last time we were here, we had looked up north Valley View to find, up north on the Valley View Drive to find other like industrial sites, and I know this was the one particular area we'd been talking about. It includes like Herman's Landscape Supply on one sixty-nine, Final Grade, uh, Central Trailer Sales, all of those. That's like the closest, I would say, like industrial park. Here, it's about two miles up one sixty-nine. The primary difference you're gonna see between that area and the area of the development we're talking about is the fact that this area is directly off of one sixty-nine. You could see all of their businesses from one sixty-nine, and you can access them directly from one sixty-nine. In addition to that, if you look here, there's a water course that runs kind of on the backside, it's hard to see. That's where the start of the Wildlife Refuge starts, but between that water course and the road, there's a buffer zone that like helps protect in, industrial things, people, whatever, from getting into our protected Wildlife Refuge. They have thoughtfully built in a buffer between the industrial area and the wildlife area that's not present in the current plans. There's no neighboring residential structures you're gonna see on this map, there's not really houses. There's some farming going on, but not really houses, unlike here where we're looking at entirely to the west, it's just houses. That's really all you're gonna see from the development. And this area is also look, was located entirely out of the floodplain, so they didn't need to bring it up to grade to get it out of the floodplain. I mean, it was already there, it was buildable. So when we're trying to make an apples-to-apples comparison between this industrial park, which is, you know, up one sixty-nine and actually accessible from one sixty-nine, it's hard for me personally to see the comparison between the two and try to make them the same. One fundamentally to me, I don't believe they look to be the same. And we've heard a little bit about screening. I've heard screening is gonna be something that's gonna happen um, when they actually bring forward the uses, but when you actually read the criteria for approval on a conditional use permit, they talk about screening, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about screening. Much of the existing landscaping, anywhere where it says existing trees all along that diagonal slope there, none of those are on the developer's property. As Zach mentioned, we're trying to make improvements to our little strip of driveways thirty-three feet wide, and clear some of that brush so we're able to drive our cars down there and actually make it a driveway that's in compliance with Sand Creek Township. So a lot of that, if we wanna call it screening, maybe we don't wanna call it screening, I'm not gonna assume what their purpose is, but those trees you see there are not gonna be there to provide protection for that neighbor from having this industrial park literally right in his front yard. They reference it again, um, kind of on the south side. I know the property line there is a little bit unclear, a lot of those trees, again, are not on their property, and a lot of them are going to have to be thinned out or removed to make way for a septic system for us to build our house. I know we've been working with a septic designer, and we're really excited with the direction that's moving, because that's kind of our first hurdle into making this a residential property to the south. As I mentioned, the neighbor's house is gonna be really close, um, because he's not here, or maybe, I have no idea, I've never really met him, but I don't wanna speak on his behalf, and I didn't wanna be like a weirdo measuring things on his property, so I've estimated his house is gonna be about three hundred and fifty feet or four hundred feet from the very edge of the building on lot one. And without a lot of screening and a front door that looks right out on that, that makes me really uncomfortable to see houses that are gonna look out in very close proximity to industrial uses. So as I alluded to, the criteria for approval asks you to consider compatibility with the comp plan. We can all agree it's compatible because it's been regided. I don't need to get into my opinions on whether that regiding was appropriate or not, but it asks you to consider compatibility with the current and future land uses. I'm telling you that to the south and to the west entirely, the current and future land uses are residential. We know industrial parks have detrimental impacts on public health in residential areas. For me, it's really hard to understand the compatibility. When we look at the conditional use permit criteria for approval, it mentions compatible with, I've stated my opinion on that. Separated from sufficient distance, hard for it to be separated sufficient distance when it's right on the property line with residential, or appropriately screened from those, there's no deterrents. As somebody who was hoping to build a house out there, I can tell you it's a deterrent to think about an industrial park being right in front of where you plan to build. So that's just something I'm really hoping you'll consider is compatibility. What does that really actually look like? I'm hoping the pictures have helped illustrate that, because I know I'm much more of a visual person, and sometimes it's hard to understand what it really looks like without seeing that. So then, we talked a lot about the floodplain. I have a few more thoughts. Don't need to rehash everything, because I know you've seen these pictures now before, but these are pictures that were taken from the development site from the south and from the west, looking towards it. You can see the flooding this year was substantial. I mean, it was, it was a bad year for flooding, unfortunately. And I think we saw that kind of all across the county. One thing I do wanna point out is you look at this, and the water looks so pretty, it's so calm. It brought in a lot of water fowl, which was actually really, really pretty and cool to see during the flooding, and it looks super beautiful and calm, but flooding is actually incredibly destructive, it's dangerous, and it causes a lot of property damage. Floodwater is often not clean. I just have some pictures and examples. These were taken August tenth, which would have been last Thursday. As we talked about the last meeting, there's been a burn constructed on the south side of the proposed development, it's been there for many years. It frequently fails due to flooding because the water is actually incredibly powerful and incredibly destructive. It looks very pretty, it looks very calm, but it is not. And you can see here some of the images of what that damage looks like, where it's washed up. This burn was anywhere between eight and twelve feet high in places. It's now completely gone, you could walk right through it, between the properties. It's washed up large pieces of concrete and asphalt. It's washed up all kinds of pollution, because we know Sand Creek is unfortunately not a very clean waterway, it has a lot of pollution in it, which is very unfortunate, but it washes all of that right up here, and it brings a lot of trash. It brings a lot of very unsanitary water to the area, and it's incredibly destructive. You can see, it takes out whole trees, and it's very, it's a lot. It's a lot to have to deal with. I know we've all said some conversations now about flood fringe, what does that mean when it looks like when it floods? I have some numbers, because I'm an accountant and an auditor, and I think numbers are really what tell the story. These numbers you'll see are taken from the water gauges that the National, I think it's Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, has uh, water gauges on both the Minnesota River and Sand Creek that measure how high the water is. Didn't mean to do that. And it's the National Water Prediction Office that actually manages that, they track it. That's how we end up with like the flood watches and warnings, they're the ones who tell us when the water's gonna rise and when it's not. I've color-coded it for convenience, if you're not like a mathematician. Green means we're not in the flood. Yellow means we are in minor flood, orange means moderate, and then red you'll see is major catastrophic-type flooding. You'll note, if we just start by looking at Sand Creek, this year Sand Creek measured at uh, four point six seven feet in June. I wanna note, the flood stage doesn't start until ten feet. The reason being, I assume, although I do not work for the federal government's National Water Prediction Office, is they're measuring in the city of Jordan, where Sand Creek tends to be a little narrower, and their banks tend to be much higher. So in order for it to be considered flooded for the gauges, the water has to go up a lot more versus out here in Sand Creek Township, where the creek tends to widen and the banks tend to come down quite a bit. So that's why you'll see, it was only four point six seven feet, which isn't even considered action stage for our flooding, and yet, we see images like this that happened at that point in time. So it's important to note, even though we're not issuing flood watches or warnings, that there's water here. It's a very wet area, it happens all the time. So, I just wanna call that out, if you see that near like four point six seven feet, nowhere near flood stage, we know it was flooded. And that's probably the reason why I'm not a hydrologist, I don't study water for a living, but I would assume it's because the banks are much higher in the city of Jordan than they tend to be out in Sand Creek Township. I've also included for reference the Minnesota River's flood levels. You'll, you'll notice it's flooded almost every single year except twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. There were, in fact, so many times the river crested, it was hard for me to pick which numbers to put on the slide, because I could probably sit up here for hours and talk about how many times it floods a year. But the river's getting higher. It floods, I'm not gonna sit up here and say it's climate change, or it's not, because we all know one river is not gonna determine a whole trend like that, but what it can tell us is that flooding occurs out here all the time. The Minnesota River level has been trending higher, it gets very wet. We also talked last time, we thought, the flooding was historic for the state of Minnesota this year because we'd had really heavy rainfall, and normally we see flooding more to the spring, because we have a lot of snow, and it melts and the ground's frozen. But as, when we look at this, we see flooding happens across the entire spring and into the summer. When you actually look at the, the data from um, the National Ocean, National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, you'll actually see like flooding crest heights well into September and October on the Minnesota River. It's not uncommon for the river to rise that late. So it's not just snow melt that's causing this to happen, this is a problem that we see year-round out there. It gets wet quite often, it's a low area, it's in the river valley, that's kind of what happens in river valleys, they're wet. And then finally, just that note, that we see this site flood presumably from Sand Creek, since that's what runs through, even when Sand Creek is not at flood stage, even when it's not even considered close to flood stage by what the federal government's telling us that is. So that's a pretty big concern I have, there's those numbers. Finally, I'm gonna talk a little bit about Valley View Drive, I have a number of thoughts on that. Matt and I'll talk about that after this, I'm sure. We're talking about changing the S-curve and moving the railroad crossing. That's something that obviously is gonna need to have a lot of voices involved in it, primarily if the railroad is gonna have to get on board with moving this. I know moving crossings can take a long time, they can be expensive to move. From my understanding, the railroad has said they're interested, or they're okay with talking about the design, but we're not really at a point yet, I don't believe. I would hope this isn't the final design, since I didn't see it until the agenda was published, but I, like, we're very early on, from my understanding, in this talk. So there's a long way to go before this infrastructure that's key to accessing the development is going to actually be completely ready to be developed. The new design, as Zach said, is gonna cut off frontage for the driveways for what's gonna be our home and the neighbor's home. I'm having a really hard time when I look at it. The dark black is the current like driveways, and then you can see the S-curve at the top. It's gonna be really, it's gonna be a really hard hairpin turn to get onto Valley View. Is pretty much the only way I'm seeing that. I know we're driving farm equipment, like tractors and hay wagons and things like that on that road to get to the hayfield where we cut and bale hay. I know the neighbor has some big trailers and equipment that he's coming in and out of his property with. Making a hairpin turn like that is, is pretty alarming for me, with how curvy they're gonna make it, and the fact that we're gonna have to connect in kind of a weird part of the curve. of the curve. It has me concerned about a blind intersection there and we're talking about increasing the speed on Valley View to potentially be a 50 mile an hour road. Now we have farm equipment or trucks with big trailers trying to slow down, make a hairpin turn or turn out into a blind intersection. I'm seeing a lot of safety concerns with that. I think a lot of my safety concerns are probably stemming from the fact that at least to me and some of the other neighbors, it feels like there hasn't been a lot of collaboration with us on this yet. I've been told it's because they're still trying to get the railroad on board with working on this. But I just feel that we're not including, it's public infrastructure, more than just one member of the public, I feel, needs to be included in this conversation. I think we need to see some better collaboration working on that. Finally, moving a railroad crossing is expensive. Paving a large section of road is going to be very expensive. There's a large funding gap. I understand they're working through to put in a developer's agreement to address that gap. I just have concerns about money and I want to make sure it's not going to burden the people who already live out there, many of which do not want to see this road paved anyways. Just some comments I have about road safety here to talk about. This is from the Federal Highway Administration about S curves. People might say, well, they're going to change the S curve to make it safer according to the US DOT. This applies to any S curve kind of regardless of the speed. We can try to slow down the speed to mitigate some of these impacts, but this applies to an S curve regardless of really what we're doing. More than 25% of fatal crashes occur on S curves. S curves have a crash rate of more than three times the national average for any other stretch of road in this country. And more than three quarters of crashes on S curves are single vehicles. That means these aren't minor fender benders. These are cars going off of the road and flipping in very dramatic fashion. It's incredibly alarming to me to see that. It's upsetting. You can see here, don't want to talk about it a lot because I'm not involved with the family, but a kid did die over there last year. A young kid, I think 16. Several other people were hurt. It's a dangerous road. To prove that, last Thursday, we had a big crash. And those kids walked away this time, but last year they didn't. They really didn't. You can see the car, it's not a fender bender, it's not a rear ending, it's a car flipping until it hits a tree and gets stopped. And sometimes, as you can see, the trees break out the windows and that can cause damage. You could see on the windshield where the kid looked like he had hit the windshield. I mean, it's, it's alarming. It's scary. It's scary to think that one day I'm going to come home from work and there could be someone dead in the ditch. It's truly incredibly upsetting to look at and see. I understand paving the roads, we're trying to develop, we're trying to move kind of forward, but it's genuinely upsetting and if you don't have to live there, you know, and see the impacts of kids that die and flip. Personally, for my graduating class in Shockley High School, we had a kid who died unfortunately in a car accident a year before graduation, out on a gravelous township road as well. Somewhere near here, it's incredibly upsetting. And it's something that really sticks with you when you have to see this. So thinking about the fact we're going to increase traffic to get to these businesses, people that are unfamiliar with it, we're creating potentially a blind driveway and increasing speeds. I'm really concerned about safety and public safety here. So I just want to end, I don't like looking at the pictures because as you may be able to tell, it's upsetting to see horrific car accidents. No one likes that. See some of my favorite pictures out here. We love looking at trail cameras, a deer out there, there's a lot of wildlife. It's absolutely beautiful, but I'm just going to really ask you to consider when we're thinking about compatibility with the area, how is it compatible when we're talking about serious road safety, when we're talking about there's actual documented issues with public health living near industrial sites? And really just think about, would you want an industrial park 400 feet from your front door? Because I know I certainly don't. So with that, I believe that's going to conclude all the comments I have unless anyone else...
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm Peggy Jo Donatt and I spoke last time and I'm here to speak again. I know that some of the main concerns that carried over from last time were the, the huge amount of water that was here because of the flooding. I know it, one of you did actually come to the site and saw that it was up to a shocking level. So that is definitely a concern that underlies everything here. Another concern carried over was the natural area corridor and the county-defined border zone. And a question was raised by one of you whether this project goes against the comp plan. And the answer to that is yes, because it's in an area that requires special treatment and respect. I really think there are all kinds of things wrong with this project. At least a few, like 25% of the stormwater runoff from impervious surfaces is not projected to be captured in the infiltration basins. I think that's a problem. I want to point out that no Minnesota DNR comment cannot be construed to mean approval. So I'd like to point that out. Let's see, and then I have a picture of, I think we have seen this. These were examples that were cited by the proposer that show what the area looks like in similar uses. And I really don't think this is compatible at all. If this, if these are shown as examples of what this type of thing is going to look like, I think it's not at all fitting. So I disagree. I, the staff report, which is very nicely written and put together, says that the project does not affect the context of the area, but just saying that doesn't make it true. So it defies the guidance for the defined border areas. And those are laid out for us in county maps. The concept is defined in the comp plan and the areas are delineated as well. So you can see that, that we're right smack dab in one of these border zones that, that deserve our, our respect and our help. So that's, I think, very, very important here. Another thing that was, that I disagree with in the, in the project, in the proposal there is, in the staff report, is that the, quote, "The proposal does not require any environmental review." To me, that's kind of jaw dropping because I had three conversations with Sarah Leroy at the, the Environmental, the EQB, the Environmental Equality Board. And how, the process turns out that the person making the determination that there is or is not necessary to have an EIW, guess who it is? It's, it's just the county. So once they say they don't think it needs review, that's it. I feel like it's the fox in the hen house here because there's a lot of interest for doing this, but there has been no significant environmental review at all. So I disagree with that statement in the staff report. No serious assessment of harm to wildlife or the environment has occurred. It's kind of a self fulfilling fantasy to say that it has. Okay, then the flood, the flood planning really, really, really ignores the 500-year threat. Okay, now this is, so the, the 500-year is, starts here and goes all the way up here and goes all the way across...
We can't see.
Oh, I'm sorry. My big heart, you're right.
There you go. Now you can see.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Yeah, so the 500-year, okay, for one thing, the, the opinion on, on the 500 versus 100 year threats has changed recently with FEMA. FEMA's administrator, Dan Criswell, recently hailed the new rule and said that riverine areas must conform to the 500-year flood criteria when they are allowing new construction. So they have adjusted their criteria in, in recognition of the fact that this word 500 year doesn't mean 500 years at all anymore. I went earlier, I really do want to make it a clear point that, that the fringe area, it, it's flooding, it's not every 30 years or 40 years. It is really every, every couple of years that that fringe area is, is completely submerged. So the floodwaters come up quickly and violently and I think it's, it'd be a foolish area to believe that containment ponds and impervious surfaces won't be at risk. And also the septic systems, they are within the flood risk area as well, particularly if they're commercial buildings and areas where the staff is not there, is gone over the weekend and at night. There, there can be contamination that can occur and not, no one would know and it would go on for hours and days, so. Another problem with this project is that the road funding is not secured and that came out in the meeting, the most recent Sand Creek Township meeting. I think it was this number that we talked about was $1.8 million for road improvements are not yet covered. And so there's a long list of things that I think are wrong. But the biggest, the biggest, biggest problem here is, is this. Okay, it, it is the infiltration rate problem, that we are in a special area within the state where the vertical travel time for water into the, water into the aquifer is hours to weeks. And I'll tell you what, I don't think sprinkling dirt on the area does anything to change the, this, this fact that we are in an area that has got to have special, special treatment and special care. The difference of a few inches of sand piled up does not change the problematic geology here. Anything toxic, anything spilled will end up in the groundwater in a matter of hours. Accidental spills, maybe they haven't even been noticed or mentioned or by the people that are running the businesses, well, they're going to be in our water. And it's, it's my water and it's your water too. So I don't want us to get sidetracked with all the maps and the engineering and everything from the fact of the basic undeniable reality of, of the soils here. They also mentioned wanting to dig a duck pond, but that would go down below the surface of the groundwater. I don't think that's a very good thing to be doing, opening something up there either. Now, developing this area for commercial or industrial use has been wrong from the very, very start. And this was affirmed by the Minnesota Court of Appeals. If you recall, there was a project for a gravel mine there and it was defeated for these same two reasons. And then it went up to the Minnesota Court of Appeals where it also lost and it was not allowed to happen. The groundwater threatened by these soils that are too thin to, to protect the groundwater and the natural context of the surroundings really make this a grossly incompatible project. If I owned this land, I would see it for what it is. I would see it for where it sits. I would see it for the context of the beautiful things that are there. I would see it for the, the border zone, which has been wisely created to, to enhance the Minnesota Valley Wildlife Refuge. I would see it for the risks that are here because of the water. I would never dare think about doing these kinds of things, something like this here. I, I don't know if this means that the property owner didn't know or, or, or doesn't care about the soils here. I don't know if the person has thought much about what it means to irrationally destroy something like this. They cut down dozens of 100 to 200-year-old trees, just flatten them all down. But we are looking at this and I think we do care. And I think we all have to wonder, why are we so eager to fulfill this one man's objective when so much flies in the face of it? There are other places available for this. If you recall, in the city of Jordan's letter, they pointed out, I think it's Wakeman, Cushman or whatever, that large commercial real estate company, they pointed out there are many, many available places for this, but this isn't, this isn't it. We're, we're trying to shoehorn something onto a spot where it just doesn't belong and it's a threat to all of us. Very few stand to gain, but really we all stand to lose. So I'm asking you to, to vote no and stop this, this harm and this risk. I, I would say, I mean, maybe we put some houses there or maybe a solar farm or keep it agricultural, something that avoids industrial activity in this area, really where it does not belong. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My pleasure.
May I also like to make comment on this application before us? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Again, my name's Mark Sasakar. I'm with GMA Land and thank you for all your comments. We, again, we have been working with staff for quite a while on this project. One of the earlier things that we did is we did sit down with staff and talked about what we could and could not do in the floodplain area. And it was, it's a process. There's a lot of rules with the Scott County ordinance and it took us a little bit of time to work through it, but Vanessa was very patient with us and took us step by step and that's basically where we came up with this plan. Again, just a couple of comments based on the comments from the public. You know, Valley View Road is a, you know, that's an, that's a, that is a currently dangerous intersection coming across that railroad. It's, if you haven't been out there, it's a one-way, so one car at a time. It's almost a 90-degree turn twice. Again, our proposed plan, which we were working with the township on, is an S curve, but it's an S curve at 20 miles an hour to go over a railroad track. So no one's looking to increase the speed limit out there. We're just trying to make the whole situation safer than it is today. Again, the flooding, you know, what we're doing and working with Vanessa, we did pull all our building pads out of the current floodplain. And then what we're looking to do is fill areas so the outside storage is outside of the floodplain. We will go through the low mark procedure and eventually the FEMA floodplain maps will be amended. As far as the fringe and the storage, again, we ran many different calculations and it's all in your package with the mitigation areas. We're showing a no rise through this area once we complete our mitigation area. Our mitigation, you know, areas right now are farmed during the dry periods and during the wet periods, they're basically just water and then stuff grows up, weeds. Once we work on this area, there will no longer be farmland. Our mitigation, we're only looking at excavating two to three feet down because we're going to stay, keep the three feet separation between the groundwater. And then as you look through the plans, we're going to reseed that whole area. It's not going to be farmland, so it'll be some type of wet prairie mix type seed. So again, Vanessa may want to say, but as we worked with Vanessa, you know, part of the, her excitement about this project was to improve the environment in this area rather than having it farmland. Now, we aren't looking at doing the seven industrial sites and maybe industrial wasn't the right word I use in my name, but again, we're not looking at high-two industrial sites. This is rural business, so we're below industrial sites. So we're talking about a cabinet shop. We're talking about a guy that wants to make saunas. We're talking about a guy that, you know, takes in SUVs and converts them for, you know, police or, you know, fire use. I mean, those are, those are the uses we're looking, we're looking at maybe a plumber shop. So there's no huge manufacturing industrial situation going on here that would cause problems with people's health concern. It isn't, it is labeled industrial, but it's basically business. The reason this site is attractive is that it's not in the city. We've got in, guys that are looking for areas that would like to be more in a rural area for doing their development work or their contractor shop. As far as screening on Lot 1, again, there, as you look at our site plan, you can see there's quite a big setback there. So your county ordinance already has, you know, parking lot, everything needs to be back. And as far as what that actual screening is, you know, we'll follow the code when we bring that building in and then we'll meet that code. As far as the squiggly lines for trees, we indicate where trees are, you know. We're not anticipating taking them down, so that's why they're on the plan. And that's pretty normal site planning. They're someone else's trees and we don't plan to touch them or do anything with them. We're not saying they're screening, they're just trees that are currently there and they are owned by someone else. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I just wanted to again say that, you know, we've been working with staff quite a bit on this project and the township. And then as far as the development agreements and funding, we're understanding we're getting close and we'll be working out the details here in the next couple of weeks.
Mr. Chair. As far as the buildings themselves, you're in the fringe area, some of them are, they're raising grade there to get above, I assume you're raising grade to get above the 100-year flood. That's a standard practice, about a foot or two above the 100-year flood, I assume that's happening.
We've already moved all the building pads out of the current floodplain area.
Yeah.
So even with our fill, it'll be out of the floodplain, but we're still keeping the buildings out of the original flood.
But you probably designed for 100-year flood or higher.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's what, that's what I'm getting at. You designed that for that. And then as far as infiltration in the ponds and that, you can control infiltration if it's too fast. You can control it by some mitigation with the soils and that can be done.
Correct. Per the permit and PDS permit and stuff like that, you can infiltrate at, you know, you need to, you gotta go at a certain, you have to have it infiltrate at a certain pace, but you can't go too fast.
Exactly right.
Usually when we get a situation where it's too fast, we bring in material that's all set up.
In this case, it probably is going to be too fast, but whatever. It is what it is. You can just engineer for it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Christian Watson.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, can I just add to that real quick?
Sure.
One clarification on the storm ponds, although Megan Tasked did do the review, the intent of the storm ponds is to catch normal runoff, so it's not intended to collect and infiltrate highly polluted or contaminated runoff associated with any particular use. This is standard runoff that comes off of roofs, roads, driveways, whatever. As each individual lot would come in, should any... As each individual lot would come in, should any proposed use propose any type of runoff that would exceed what would come off of a regular property, it would have to do additional stormwater treatment above and beyond prior to even discharging off of that site. So this is just to catch the stormwater and manage that, but not intended to heavily treat any particular use. That also would be added on top if something came in, if this was approved. So just to clarify that part.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Watson.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead.
Can you just, we talk about the Valley View Drive, the schedule for improvements. Do we have any timeline on that for this S curve, which you talked about here briefly?
Next year.
It's a township road. Township engineer just tell me.
All right, it's a township responsibility. Okay.
It'll be, that'll be all covered in the development agreement.
Thank you.
Commissioner Robbins.
Have you met at all with any of the people in the area besides the township?
Met with the neighbors?
Yes.
No.
Why?
I guess. That's a good question. We have not met with them. So I guess we've got an individual right here who I've talked to once, and he basically is running some type of landscape service. He's recently built a berm, and he has trucks coming and going. So I don't know if he was overly excited one way or the other. The folks that are anticipating to build a home right here, which, by the way, has an elevation of 734, all our buildings are at 739. So I guess I'd be nervous. If they're nervous about flooding up here, I'd be real nervous about flooding around here. That's just my own personal comment. So again, we weren't aware that there's someone building here. The individual that spoke who lives right here, I have knocked on her door and have written her letters about a number of years ago about possibly purchasing this right away. And that's back, way back when we were talking to the city about trying to bring water and sewer here, but we had no response from them. But again, to answer your question, no, we have not reached out to them with this application.
All right, thanks, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Pekin, did you hear?
No, I did not. I'm not at this point.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, maybe it's a question for Marty or Nathan. I assume this area's been planned a long time for industrial. Do you know how long it's been planned by the county?
Might be for Brad.
Maybe it's Brad's question.
Yeah, Commissioners, if you recall, we went through a comprehensive plan amendment process about two years ago to re-guide the property from urban business reserve to rural business. And then, so that happened, process happened two years ago. I think the final approval's happened earlier this year, and that allows all the property owners of this corridor to come in and request a rezone in any development proposal.
But it's been kind of guided towards business for a long time.
It's been guided for urban business reserve with the intention that the city had long-range plans of developing this for commercial.
And the city's looking at it, and everybody else, so it's kind of a cooperation between us and the city, county and the city. So it's been long-term, it's been planned for business for a long time.
It has not been planned for agriculture. It's been planned for some type of business use.
That's what I meant.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name's Chad Sandy. I'm the chairperson and one of the supervisors for Sand Creek Township. One of the toughest things that we do as, like, elected officials or appointed officials or staff is have to deal with conflicts like this when, as you well know, that's the reason for your purpose here. But to say that, you know, that this is all a big surprise is not necessarily accurate. To, you know, to be disappointed with it, I certainly understand that. And the arguments that were made tonight were excellent. I mean, they're very compelling, and they're obviously very heartfelt. And I understand, as an elected official and as a person that cares about our township and our county, that these things definitely impact people. Take the flip side of that a little bit and kind of, you know, put a timeline to it. Mr. Huber just kind of swooped into it a little bit by asking, how long ago was the UBR rating there? And that's urban business reserve. And urban business reserve doesn't jive with the township, right? And so to kind of dispel a little bit about the presentation here is that the development that was occurring out here, shaping up since 2020, is imminent, okay? Developers drive the market. We don't, as a township, and we certainly don't as a county. And so the developers saw something a few years ago that they liked here, and they said that it had compatible zoning. And so they made, you know, certain investments, and they've worked long and hard to get to this day. But in the meantime, you know, they've also had to consider all of the things that we heard tonight. And in addition to that, to try to kind of stymie what would have been an urban business development, the township kind of stepped in on behalf of the two developers and said, listen, if we want to fight off the City of Jordan from getting this out here and preserve our township rural way of life, which is exactly what those people have right now, they all have their beautiful taste of township living. And I have my same township living. I'm on a farm, and I wouldn't give it up for the world. And, but we've done our really best to try to find some common space in the middle there. You know, originally, Mrs. Shank's property, she didn't want the City of Jordan to go across that 30-foot right-of-way to go to the property for Mrs. Sawyer and Mr. Perkel. And we respected that. And so that was why, when we started to talk to the developers and when we discussed with county staff about what would, what would this look like if the township board were to support development, you know? We didn't want it to look like, oh, geez, the township board's all for this, and it's a done deal. So we took into account that Mrs. Shank did not want, did not want any of that other property to be zoned differently, and so we left that alone. The other individual that nobody's speaking for tonight, he's already doing, you know, kind of a conditional use permit for a home-based business. He's already doing a bunch of the same of what's going to be right across the street. So yes, you can make the argument that he has a home there and that he's going to be looking out 300 feet to his, to the east and see this, but it's not, it's not the same. And these individuals that have chosen to possibly build a home there, it's not, this isn't a secret. This has been going on for a lot of years. And although, you know, I'm sorry that it's not exactly the way that you had envisioned, you know, there's been a lot of planning, and there's been a lot of accommodation to make sure that we can make this the most compatibility between the two uses as we can. And so one of the biggest concerns ever since the gravel mine was here has been about environmental. And environmental is very close to my heart. I'm the biggest hunter-sportsman that you're ever going to catch in this room, but I know how to do that, and that's by having the right habitat and having the right conditions and by being a good steward of the land. And I'm a farmer. So I know, I was green before green was cool, and I know about it. And it's very important to me. And I have talked with several of these residents in the past, and I've said, you know, listen, what can we get you here to, you know, to mend the ways a little bit, to ease the pain? I mean, because there's no doubt in my mind, there's pain here. I mean, it's emotional, and nobody wants emotion. But at the same time, it's progress, with a small p. And I, and I need to be, not I specifically, but our township is one level in that process. And in order for us to try to find the best places for us to kind of co-mingle our ways and to get along the best in the sandbox is to try to do exactly what we've done here on this, on this development. And I think that by doing the, the content, the extra storage there, by having nearly a two-to-one development, that only stands to show you that the township and the county's ordinances are, they're up for the little guy. You know, they're out there for the best good that we can, and Vanessa Strong has really pushed and made sure that we have followed and that the developer has followed everything to the letter of the law. And I think that, when you look at it at the end of the day, you want to know that you got the best product out of everything you were trying to get. And by us dealing with the environmental stuff, by leaving it better than when we came, which is exactly what's going to happen here, and by changing that curve on the road because we, now we've got some funding to improve the road, we're trying to address those safety improvements. Are they going to be perfect? They never are, you know? You can never get everything the way that you want it to be, but have we addressed it? Yes, we have, and we've done it thoughtfully. And we've done it with compassion, with vigor, and with zeal, the same zeal that these residents have, you know, that are, you know, concerned with what might be the end outcome. So I just wanted to let you know that it's been a challenge, and I stand up to any challenge that we can get. But we've done some really good things here, and we've talked to them, and we're trying to give it everything that we got. But with the amount of items that are coming into this corridor in the next three to four years, and I want to just recount those for you. So there's going to be a new interchange in the City of Jordan. That's starting next year. There's going to be a new interchange across Bluff Drive. That's starting this fall already. The Bluff Drive connection is going to come down because we've received a couple of different grants for funding, and it's going to connect on Jordan Avenue down to 173rd Street. 173rd Street connects to Valley View. That's where these are, and it's not two miles away. It's about a mile at the max till that other rural industrial development starts, which is what makes this so perfect, because it's, again, trying to keep it rural, a rural business development. It's trying to keep it so that our populations and our daily truck traffic and stuff like that is kept to a minimum. We sure hope it will be. You know, you, I mean, that's what we all strive for, right, is to make it, make it as good as we can for everybody. But as bad as it is that it might affect, you know, some people's, you know, well-being, we're still trying to take that effect and make it the best that we can. And so, you know, that's our jobs as appointed and elected officials, and I just think that, you know, maybe contrary to the, to the little bit of the storyline, that that's really what's been happening here. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. One thing, too, that's a township road there.
It is.
And it's your belief that when the improvements are done, it will be a safer road than exists there right now today.
It is my.
I've driven that road a lot.
Yeah.
And that crossing at that railroad is.
It's not good.
It's not good. I can't believe it exists as it does for an active track.
Right.
That's my opinion, and I don't live in that area, but I've been down there quite a bit on time. So the moves that the township is taking to improve that road will make it safer. Your belief, right?
We do, yeah. There are some studies, and we've worked closely with the Scott County Transportation Division, and they've said, well, you know, we're improving the road, so what does improving the road mean? Well, we're paving it. So they said, well, right out of the shoots, guess what that does? It makes it a Speedway, you know? And so we said, well, how can we control that? Okay, so number one, we're only allowed by statute in the state of Minnesota to control it to a 50-mile-an-hour roadway. But then, what did, what did we do to further hamper the safety and control the traffic and to do traffic calming? We put elected to do the 20-mile-an-hour curve in there instead of the 35-mile-an-hour curve, like was suggested. And so, again, you know, these are all compromises, and are they perfect? No, and it never is. But are we doing it the best that we can? Yes. You know, and with the information that we have today, we are doing that.
Okay. Your comments.
Yeah, thank you.
I would just like to, yes, yes, very briefly, just like to rebut some of what we just heard. For one thing, it is going to be a 50-mile-an-hour road, and exchanging one form of S curve for another is not any big improvement. It does not remove the danger of going around the area that we have already seen. The project now, it does allow for very large buildings with outdoor storage, which are unsightly, and does not fit the context. If there's paint and various things going on, it's going to hit the ground, and because it's so thin, it's going to come through, even if there are three feet of, between the top and the groundwater. What is three feet of soil going to do? It's not enough. This is an area, this is a no-go zone. And the nursing home down the way, they don't want this. They've expressed it. It's an area where people walk, and that's not going to be possible here. You know, this is not how you preserve what's going on there. The idea that this is going to be better than it was, that's just ludicrous. It's just, it flies, I mean, it's impossible. It's just, it's just absurd. You know, Sand Creek Township, it makes it sound like this thing just kind of happened, and they had nothing to do with it, and they just kind of had to go. They are the ones that put their names on the comp plan. This came directly from Sand Creek Township. It's not like they couldn't help it, that this happened, and, oh, okay, well, now we're going to have to go along. Their name was on it. And this is, and just because you've planned for it doesn't make it right.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone else have anything else to add before I close the public hearing? I entertain a motion at this time to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion, Mike Commissioner Hamchus, Senator Mike Commissioner Huber. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Discussion or motion?
Well, Mr. Chair, I've learned some things tonight. I would have hoped or wished that the developer would have met with the people involved. However, Sand Creek Township's speech was a good one, and I'm persuaded that there has been some effort to try to make this as good as they can make it. I also am interested in what's really going to go in there. You know, when we say agricultural reserve, what do we really mean? What is it? You know, if you mention industrial, sometimes people think of assembly lines and stuff like that. That isn't quite what's going to go in. This is a lot less than that. So, and I understand the people that talked. It is a great area, and you do wish that it, sometimes that it could stay the same. But I think there's been some effort made by the developers to try to do this in the least harmful way that they can.
Mr. Chair, I looked at this area's been planned for light industrial for a long, long time. It's not like this is brand-new. And the engineers, I know as an engineer myself, that they handle the flooding. They could raise grade and get it above the 100-year flood. to help on safety, I would assume.
Commissioner Pika?
Well, I wasn't going to say this, but I did lose my mother at that railroad, uh, crossing hitting the train. So I'm kind of tore up with this whole thing. Um, it's, the Hamcheses or Steve put a lot of, uh, work into this, and it been back and forth. And it just seems like, uh, every agency is on his back, and I'm kind of hoping that they follow through with all this. And, and just seeing that the intersection of the safety because of my mother is just one part of it. But that's all I got.
Can I just, one other thing? The one thing that we had last time, and it's still here on this project, is water. Um, the flooding that happens, and, um, for the people that are spending a lot of money right now, they have to be, they have to be persuaded, and I think other people have to be persuaded, that you can deal with this flooding and all the water that's going to be around the site. Um, you know, once it's up and you have one of these 100-year floods, it's too late. So, just a comment, Mr. Chair, that's all.
Mr. Chairman.
Watson.
Been a very well discussed project that's been going on for a long, long time.
Here one was going to become a gravel pit. Um, I will say, I think the applicant has addressed the concerns regarding the flood plan. And, um, the township, I think, has done a good job in, uh, putting this whole business plan together. We are governed by the 2040 comprehensive plan. And based upon that, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Based on the criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the rezoning of 97.13 acres. A suburban business reserve to UBR to rural business reserve, RBR, for the preliminary plot of Valley View Industrial Park consisting of seven lots and two outs, two outlots and 97.13 acres. And the conditional use permit, they had more than 1,000 cubic feet yards to fill in the flood plan. Knowing this recommendation is subject to the conditions of approval listed in the staff report, you be satisfied prior to county board consideration of the plot.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Watson, second by Commissioner Huber. Do I have any discussion this time before I call for vote? All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to thank everyone for their contributions this evening on this occasion before us. Our next item is number 2024-40, request to consider amendment on conditional use permit, number 616-C-8 issued to Mid-America Festivals Corporation to operate the Minnesota Renaissance Festival and Trail of Terror related to onsite parking numbers and onsite parking passes. Mid-America Festivals applicant Ryan Rock Production Products Incorporated in Shakopee, Minorkan Sioux Community, property owners in section 16, 21, and 28 of Louisville Township. And our, uh, planning manager, Brad Davis, will be making the staff report. Good evening, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So back in 2022, uh, during the 2022 festival season, there was some traffic issues, uh, related to the, uh, festival. That led to some discussion with the, uh, operators of Mid-America Festival to look at different ways of getting patrons to the property, uh, and not back up some of the traffic that we started seeing. So that led to, uh, last year where we worked with the applicant to update their conditional use permit. We did all of that, uh, before the county board, um, because we needed to expedite some things. And so the planning commission was not involved in that update. Uh, that was approved then in 2023, and, um, they completed a successful, uh, season last fall. And now they came back, uh, this, uh, spring asking for two modifications. And we just, we did have time to bring it through this process, getting a township rec, uh, well, we did get a township recommendation in 2023, but we got a township recommendation, and then tonight, uh, hold a public hearing on it and look for a planning commission recommendation before it goes to the county board. So, Mid-America Festivals is the operator of the Renaissance Festival. Uh, the, the map on the screen here just shows a general location. We, uh, we seem to be along this corridor a lot tonight, along the Minnesota River, 169 corridor. Um, Mid-America Festivals is requesting two modifications to a couple of their conditions. They want to reset the price of the at-the-gate parking pass, and I'll talk a little bit about that. That's the first modification. The second modification is to allow their professional parking company to sell daily parking passes in a number equal to the number of vehicles that leave the site, as they continuously monitor that. And that would begin in the afternoon of each festival day. So I'm sure many of you are familiar with the Renaissance Festival, a popular event held, uh, on weekends from late August. I think the first weekend is coming up here this weekend.
Yep.
And then, uh, ends in October. The festival draws about 300,000 visitors each year. It's been in operation since 1971. It's been in this location since 1973 in Louisville Township. Access to the festival grounds, um, uh, generally, uh, southbound traffic on 169, uh, would, uh, take the, the new interchange routes up to Red Rock Drive and 145th Street to enter the southern part of the, the property, and that, those that feed into what are known as the King's Lots on the south end. And the other access into the site is off of 41, coming in from the north. And that brings you down to the Queen's Lots and other parking lots. And, um, the package included a site plan that was, uh, prepared for both, uh, this year, it's, uh, the 2024 season as well as last year, showing, uh, generally, uh, where some of those major parking lots are located, the King's Lot, several of the Queen's Lots, and some other parking lots. Uh, and then, uh, an overflow, uh, area known as the Green Lot. So, um, I'm going to go over the amendments. I'm going to look to staff. Are we still under a time crunch to get one of your consultants?
He missed his flight, so we're okay.
We're okay. Just want to make sure.
I mean, Tony's not okay.
Tony's not okay, but he's here. So I'm going to go through it, and then I'll ask, uh, Tony to come up and provide some additional information.
Yep. Brad, you have to speak in the microphone. We're not, we're not hearing that.
Yep. So I was just confirming that, uh, one of the consultants was still going to be able to present some information tonight. So, uh, let's talk about the First Amendment. That's, uh, resetting the price of an at-the-gate parking pass. So last year, um, the price of a pre-purchased online parking pass, if you bought a parking pass in advance, that was $10. So, uh, if you did not have a pass and you, and you showed up because you didn't know last year that there was a pass required, or you just decided not to buy one, um, in advance, if you showed up, the at-the-gate, uh, price for patrons was $30. The reason for that is we had a condition that says that that price at the gate needed to be three times the price of an online sales. Um, so this year, Mid-America Festivals is considering raising the price of a pre-purchased online parking pass to $15. And that, of course, would then trigger the at-the-gate price at $45. So I think that's the reason why they're coming before us. There's some concern about having that higher $45 price for the at-the-gate, uh, price range. In the staff report, we talked a little bit about how many tickets were sold in advance, pre-purchased online, and how many were sold at the gate. And roughly 80% of the parking passes were sold online, and the other 20% were sold at the gate. That's one year of data. We don't know what, uh, what this year will look like, or future years will look like. But 80%, 20% is, is that split. So the reason why, um, the condition was set to have the price three times greater than the online was to try to disincentivize people from just, uh, arriving without a ticket. Um, that, again, was another, uh, method to try to, uh, reduce the amount of patrons that drive directly to the site. We really encouraged, uh, last year to get more people taking the buses or transit to the festival, and limiting the number of people that show up. So that was kind of the theory behind that, that setting that three times price. Um, so as I, as we stated in the report, Mid-America Festival feels like that $45 price is, uh, would be a bit unfair and a bit high for a lot of their, uh, patrons who've come for many years. And they would like to keep that at-the-gate price at $30. And so that's a little bit of background on the first, um, condition change. The second one deals with, um, what we called backfilling, or reselling, or replenishing the number of daily parking passes. So under the current, um, conditional use permit, the maximum number of parking tickets or vouchers issued for each day is set at either 5,000 vehicles or 7,000 vehicles if they meet three performance standards. And those performance standards are spelled out in the permit. Um, there's no allowance of backfilling, or refilling, or replenishing those lots, uh, to that maximum number. If there's a festival day when the pre-purchased, uh, plus the at-the-gate daily parking patches have reached that 7,000, and last year that happened twice, where on some of their busiest days, between the number of tickets they sold online and the number of tickets they sold at the gate hit that 7,000 mark, yet it happened about 12:30 in the afternoon. And so, um, as people were leaving the, uh, the festival in the early afternoon, the parking lot started opening up. And, um, patrons continued to arrive to park, and were told that, uh, they were not allowed to park there because they've hit their 7,000 max. And these patrons, of course, will look out into a, a parking lot that did not seem full. And those patrons, patrons then were turned around to, uh, encourage to either go to a, a park and ride lot to take transit back in, um, was the, uh, was the message. So, according to, uh, data that Mid-America provided in their traffic management plan, about 11% of patrons who purchase a pass online last season never redeemed them. So these are, are considered no-shows. For whatever reason, they bought, uh, maybe a variety of parking passes around multiple weekends and looked at the weather forecast to determine which one they'd go to. And on those weekends, they didn't go. There was a no-show. So that's another reason why they're looking for a little more flexibility in this replenishment is because of the 11% of no-shows that happen. So, as it's proposed, the number of vehicles that would be replenished, again, would be monitored so that at no one time during the day would there be more than 7,000 vehicles. And that's a nuance that's really important. Before we said the max for the day is 7,000, but what they're asking for is at one, at any point in time during the festival day, we will not exceed 7,000 vehicles. Um, so that's the big, the big theory there, the big, uh, request there. Then we talked about when does that replenishment occur. So there's some data in your staff report, uh, looking at, uh, when the parking lots typically turn over. And that means that there, there's more, um, vehicles leaving the parking lots than entering the parking lots. And so there's two graphs in your staff report showing the 2022 observed, uh, kind of turnover rate, and then the 2023. And it's a really precise data. If you recall, uh, in looking at the conditions, we do require, um, uh, monitoring of the number of vehicles. And, and last year, they used cameras and, and that technology to really, uh, specifically count the number of vehicles entering and exiting the site. So it's, uh, good data, and the data shows that in 2022, um, the turnover there is, is occurring roughly between, uh, 1:30. When, you know, about 1:30, 1:45. 2023 shows that turnover rate a little bit sooner, maybe 12:45, 1 o'clock. Um, it's important to note that the peak ingress time, the, the peak time when most patrons arrive is in that 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM period. So it's this data that the applicant cites to, uh, request that this backfill or replenishment occur after 1:30. So in other words, they would not resell or replenish the parking lot until after 1:30 in the afternoon. Um, I think I'll pause there. I will let the applicant come up and provide more information on the request. Then I'll come back and give you staff's recommendation on it, and also share the recommendation from the township and MinDOT.
Can I, um, Brad, can I?
Yep.
I, I'm, I want to make sure I got this right. You
Yep.
You've got people that come out to the parking lot, and then they leave. And so instead of 7,000, you might have at 2 o'clock, only 6,500. So what you want in the change is you want to be able to fill, you want to keep that parking lot at 7,000. And if people leave, then other people come in, and that's what replenishes. Is that right?
That's what the applicant, that is what the applicant is requesting, is to replenish the lot. Or allow, uh, patrons to, uh, enter the site if the maximum 7,000 parking tickets have been sold.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And, and that only happened twice. Uh, the applicants can correct me, but I believe that happened twice where they sold out their 7,000 tickets on two of their busiest days.
Right. Thank you.
All right. If the applicant wants to come up and present, and if you can help me do this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Planning Commission. My name is John Matsko. Uh, I work with SRF Consulting, and we were the consulting firm that was hired last year by MAF, Renaissance Festival, to develop basically a fully integrated traffic management plan, or transportation management plan, more appropriately. Because it includes not only traffic and vehicles, it includes the, the busing, um, the internal routes. It was kind of a wholesale scheme as to how do you operate, manage the event. Um, also as part of that, and with us tonight, um, we have MAF, but we also have, uh, Tony Janowick. Uh, Tony is the, uh, what we call the on-scene commander, so to speak. Um, during the incident, his firm, uh, his parking company is the one who manages this. But, uh, he actually does the managing, or his, and, and his staff manages the traffic flow, the changeroad message signs out on the roadway, um, when we put messages out, if parking lot's full, et cetera. So, um, the, we both have experience in doing the event management and, uh, parking management, uh, for the event. We, um, did approach, uh, at the request of, uh, our client, MAF, um, to, uh, proceed with some things that would help make 2024 maybe better, operate better than 2020, 23. Um, one of which was, uh, in looking at the cost of parking, um, obviously, the shuttle system and things like that, uh, are expensive. Um, and the, uh, we've placed a big emphasis on getting people into, uh, transit to come via the shuttle buses. It was actually very successful last year. Uh, our busiest day, 30% of the patrons that came to the, uh, event actually came by shuttle. Um, this year, we've brought on Southwest Transit. Uh, they've come onboard, uh, opening four park and ride lots over west of the river. Um, and hopefully we're going to get even more, uh, uh, people onto transit coming via shuttle, uh, in that regard. But there were a couple of things that, that, uh, showed up last year. One was, the parking might have been a little bit cheaper than it should have been. Um, by the same token, with that requirement of having to charge three times as much for those that show up, it actually makes the cost pretty prohibitive. And it is, a lot of family events come down there, and if people didn't pre-plan ahead of time, the cost gets pretty spendy when you get to $45. Um, so that prompted the, uh, discussion here is, can we get some dispensation in the three times amount, and say it's $15 and $30, go to two times, uh, to make it more palatable? The additional $15 may drive more people to transit, um, in that regard, because it's $15 to park. Um, I think staff did a good job in looking at what, you know, State Fair Park I think staff did a good job in looking at what, you know, state fair parking is, the Scott County Fairgrounds, et cetera, and it seems to be commensurate with what a reasonable fee to charge would be. And the penalty is double that. So, if you didn't get your pre-parking, so there is an incentive to also get your pre-parking. So, that's the first one, and we appreciate staff support, at least from the staff report. It appears that they support that. The second issue comes down more of an operational issue, and as Planner Davis articulated is that there were a couple of times last year that we did end up at that 7,000 vehicle limit. The first one was kind of a misread of the rules. I thought it was 7,000 onsite, and we had people not showing up, and the parking company sold to get to the 7,000. We had no issues operationally. We had no backups, no problems and stuff like that, but appropriately so, MAF reminded both myself and Interstate Parking that the limit was 7,000 total. So, we weren't to do that again. And so, we did make changes and not do that. That resulted in the September 25th, I believe it was, when we did hit that limit with the prepaid, et cetera, and we did go into a notification process of telling people that they couldn't park onsite, we'd hit our limit, and we actually had to implement the parking lot's full scenario, which diverted people to the Scott County Fairgrounds, at least that's how we were directing them from the site. All the change of message signs and the public messaging went out that the parking lots are full, use park-and-ride locations to get there. Last year, there were three times that we had backups onto 169. One was the first morning. I call it opening jitters. The King's Lot was short in how they were bringing things in, and after about 15 minutes, that was cleared up when additional staff was brought in to open it. We never had a problem after that. The second time was train backup, something we can't control, train blocked it and was pretty significant in the delay. It did cause backup onto 169. The third time that it backed up was when we went into the transition period where we said that the parking lots were full and that we had to get people out. So, they, you know, were obviously coming in, we can't let them in, so we had to go into a transition process. And during that transmission process of about a half hour, we backed out onto 169. And we actually, in analyzing after the fact, where we actually made the situation worse because we had people coming to the scene or to the parking, then we had to turn them around and send them back. We were making, you know, another trip, and then we brought them back via transit. In that time period, we actually had parking spaces available onsite that we could have accommodated because people did, in fact, leave. And the, how we see from above here, Brad, is that?
You can just use the presentation. That's it on the screen there.
You want to use this?
Yeah. Just go to page six there.
So, you can close through here if you want to do that.
All right. So, here's one of the points I wanted to make. This is our parking transactions by day and hour. And our peak ingress time is about, if you look at the peaks here, about 9 o'clock in the morning. It was one day that the peak was 10 a.m., but we get that big influx first thing in the morning, and then it actually tails off after that period of time. People come, but they come to a slower rate, and they go away. You can see the peak ingress here after we had the train blockage, we went down, and then it shows how we actually picked up that additional amount of vehicles after the train was done. The, this graph here, as Planner Davis showed, shows that influx period here where we actually, these are the vehicles that are entering, and these are the vehicles exiting. It actually crosses about that 12:30, 12:45. But we actually reach our peak parking here, which is at about noon. So, we actually, that's the most site last year that we had onsite was about noon, and by 12:30, we already were creating open parking spaces as people were leaving. Now, the rate gets bigger on the way as you move further down the line. You know, just our lane usage. This was the peak ingress traffic flow presentation. This is kind of from our after-action report that we did at the end of the year. And I was kind of trying to find the shots that we had taken here on the capacity versus turnover. So, at, is it the next one, Tony? I'm going to bring Tony up, too, to answer any questions that you may have to go here. But this was the train. Here, this was the shutdown on that last Saturday when we shut things down. We closed the site at 12:15 and turned people around. And I know there was a reference in the staff report that at 1:08 p.m., that there didn't appear to be much room for parking here, but this is actually the King's Lot, which is the southernmost lot, that at 1:08, you can see up towards the front here, there is quite a bit of parking spaces that's still available at that time that we could have parked people, but we actually turned them away, that they couldn't park. In the middle here, I mean, we're getting further away at the, let's go back here to 12:52. This is the Queen's Lot. There's a little bit of parking left here yet. This is the up front, or what I call a closer parking. Now, there's actually some parking in the back that isn't showing here. Frankly, from an operational perspective, we prefer that there not be a time period. We'd like to be able to manage the system for the capacity and do what the CUP requests and desires us to do, which is not have any traffic backed up onto any of the roadways. And so, our preference would have been nothing, that we just be allowed to do replacement based on available capacity, cap it at the 7,000, and let Interstate Parking manage the system the way it is with the full desire of not having any traffic backed out onto any roadway. Through talking with staff and things like that, there was some concern that that might not be acceptable, that maybe we needed to pick a time that was later in the day. And when we looked at the inflection rate and everything else, we liked 12:30, and we settled on 1:30 if we had to do something. But what our concern is, is that, you know, we've been kind of hired to manage the things here, and being told what we have to do kind of sets constraints on things that don't allow us to make decisions to achieve the ultimate goal of the CUP, which is no traffic on the roadways. So, I'll introduce Tony Janowick, if he's got anything to add. Again, Interstate Parking is the on-street daily operations manager that's responsible for doing this and assuring the plan gets implemented and we achieve our goals. So, Tony?
Commissioners, good evening.
Good evening.
Are there any questions, or would you like me to add a few comments to what John?
Can I just ask one? I want to make sure I get this right because, first of all, your mission is not to have traffic backups, traffic jams. And so, when there are spaces open on the King's Lot or Queen's Lot, last year, you wouldn't replenish them, but now you're thinking of doing that because that helps to prevent a traffic jam? Have I got that right or not?
That's 100% correct, yeah. Yeah. And to your question, just to add some color to it, we operate major event venues across the country. This is the only one that we're prohibited from backfilling open spaces. It goes against every traffic management objective any professional would ever tell you. We just completed the Wisconsin State Fair this, yesterday, actually, and on Saturday, that site holds 6,500 vehicles. We parked 13,000 cars in that site yesterday. Had we not done that, we would have sent 6,500 cars back on the roadway, creating massive congestion, backups, freeway shutdowns. It would have been, I mean, if you told the Wisconsin State Fair, if you told the Milwaukee Brewers, if you told the Utah State Fair, if you told any of the major event venues that we operate, once we're full, we're done, I'd get fired in about two and a half milliseconds. It's just not the way you should be managing the site, particularly if the CUP's intent was to eliminate backups, which we did last year very successfully compared to the year prior, except for the three conditions that John outlined. The most notable is actually when we closed the site and put cars back on your roadways. So, it's just illogical. It's not what's intended. The reason that it came about was because of a much-needed regulation of RenFest traffic from years prior, absolutely. We got involved really late in that process, and I think things had already sort of set sail, one of which was the capacity restraint, which, you know, has a place, for sure. The site can hold so many vehicles, you can't just let 15,000 cars flood into the site, right? The concept of not backfilling, I think, sort of got lost in the weeds, and it was just too late to bring it up or have any logical discussions about it with where the whole situation was at that time. And, you know, I worked every day of the RenFest last year myself, and I'll just tell you my professional and highly qualified opinion and recommendation to this Planning Commission is, it's one less constraint that will allow me to produce your desired outcome if I can backfill spaces at the point in time that we deem it necessary. And I'll give you an example of why I also think the time constraint is sort of peculiar to me and not necessary. People arrive and depart large event venue sites for a number of different conditions, mostly weather-related. If it's a really hot, humid day, our ingress peak will be much earlier in the morning. We'll fill the site by 9:00, 9:30, 10:00 a.m., and people leave much quicker. You can imagine being on the RenFest grounds, if it's 85 with 90% humidity, your duration of stay is shorter, right? So, people leave earlier. If there is still people trying to come, and I have to shut the site down because we've reached the 7,000 pre-sold cap at 11:00 a.m., now I'm just going to have a closed site until 1:30, and I'm going to double your vehicle traffic on the roadways by inviting cars only to turn them around and send them back on the roadways. If it's a really nice 68-degree sunny day, people are going to arrive later, they're going to stay longer, and in that case, even at 1:30, I may not want to open the site up because we still may be at capacity, at which point, we would be rerouting traffic to the park-and-rides if people are still trying to access the site. So, the conditional management based on what's actually occurring, and keep in mind, we're using drone photography, drone video footage to manage not only what's happening onsite, but we're monitoring all of the surrounding roadways as well, and we're making those decisions about how we manage traffic, whether we're pushing cars towards the north Queen's Lot, towards the south King's Lot. We're managing egress volume, so we're determining how many lanes are dedicated to egress versus ingress, all with the goal of keeping traffic flowing freely. And that's done through changing the VMS signs, it's done through social media, it's done through, you know, modifying our traffic lanes, what's inbound, what's outbound, moving staff around, et cetera, et cetera. So, we have countless tools to achieve the desired outcome of the conditional use permit. The one constraint that I'm very nervous will cause an undesirable outcome is this sort of subjective time that you're taking a tool out of my toolbox, right? And so, in my professional opinion, you should just not have a time and let me manage it like I manage every other large event venue that we operate across the country.
What should we say?
So, I have a question, Mr. Chair. So, how do you monitor the exit and entry of the vehicles?
Yeah. So, we use both.
Do you use technology or do you do it manually?
No, we use technology. Not only do we use our point-of-sale system that in real time tells us how many advance sale passes and day-of sales are arrived in our onsite at any given time, it updates every three milliseconds or so. We use aerial drone video footage to monitor what areas have higher and lower occupancy. And then, we also have artificial intelligence-equipped cameras that actually count vehicles arriving and departing the site. Between the three of those is how we actually can pinpoint actual occupancy on a real-time basis throughout the course of the day.
So, are you familiar with the system they have at Mall of America, the parking lot, where it shows up that the particular parking spot is free or not?
Yes.
So, what is, can you tell me the cost of that system being installed there and what's the system being installed at this parking, please?
Yeah. So, there's similar technology, but they're actually very different in terms of application. The Mall of America is a space finder system, so it's actually extraordinarily expensive, but you need a multi-level parking structure to actually install it, which we don't have here. So, what we do is we utilize our artificial intelligence-equipped camera systems that are monitoring vehicle entry and exit lanes. We're not positioning cameras to monitor every parking stall like you would in a multi-level parking structure like Mall of America has. In lieu of that, we fly our drone, which gives us aerial observations of what areas of the parking lots have vacancy and which areas are full, which is where these images have come from. Did that answer your question, or?
Partly. But what is the cost associated with monitoring it through the drones versus monitoring each spot technologically through the Wi-Fi? Have you ever estimated that?
Yeah. In an outdoor event venue, there's just no technology that would be able to do it other than what we're using. Like, the Mall of America system physically could not be installed in an outdoor environment. Yeah.
I understand, but have you looked into the market and is there anything available through Wi-Fi, monitoring a particular spot through Wi-Fi? Because Wi-Fi is there, it can be monitored.
Yeah. I mean, the technology that we're using is the technology that the industry uses for outdoor large event venues to manage occupancy and available spaces.
So, you can say with confidence that there is no Wi-Fi technology available for monitoring parking spots?
No.
Or you have not looked at it?
Oh, no. I'm, yeah, no, we're very familiar with all of the technology on the market. There's nothing that's available that you'd monitor individual space occupancy in an outdoor environment like this, other than what we're doing. Like, what we're doing is the most accurate in the industry.
Most decorated or most advanced?
Both. Most accurate and most advanced, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dr. Shapika, did you have a question?
So, whatever you guys did last year, it worked really well. I'm a business owner and live there, so whatever you did, I thought, worked really well. Probably none of our business, but where do these parking fees go? Does it go to the? business, but where do these parking fees go? Does it go to the management, the parking management? Or does, you guys split it, or how does that?
Yeah, there, there are allocations of the revenue to pay for the shuttle system, pay for our staff, and pay for, you know, all of the infrastructure costs that went into putting this program together. I, I think if you asked Mid-America, they would probably confirm that this is a major cost center of the festival, not a profit center.
So, one other, okay, so thank you for that. So, as, now, whatever we propose today and next year will be up for grabs again as far as, as far as Brian Rock chipping away at the parking lot and stuff like that. We're losing parking spaces, and that'll be brought up to new areas that you're going to plan on putting parking spaces in because of the mining that's going on and taking away all the time now?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, this year with some of the miners, it's actually not a huge quantity that we're losing this year, but there is a, there is a minor capacity reduction in the South Kingslot that we will make up for in the Queenslot because the Queenslot never reached capacity last year. So, site capacity is still adequate to handle the 7,000 vehicles.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's very, very, very helpful.
True.
All right, Commissioner, I'll conclude with the staff recommendations and then open up for a public hearing. So, staff does recommend approval of the first modification, changing the condition where the at-the-gate ticket price is two times, not three times. So we agree with that. The second one, we recommended just some additional text than what was proposed to make it clear that the number of vehicles eligible to be parked or backfilled or replenished is equal to and no greater than the number of vehicles exiting the site. So we always would maintain on those busiest days, no more than 7,000 vehicles parked onsite. We think, as was demonstrated here by Tony, we think the professional parking firm does a really good job monitoring and providing data, so there is a lot of confidence that they can track those numbers and report on them as part of the after-season reports that are required. And another condition, we think they'll be able to provide that kind of replenishment, backfill data, just to ensure that we have not exceeded 7,000. The biggest difference that you saw in the staff report is our staff looked at this, and it was both planning staff and highway staff, and our staff is recommending that that replenishment starts at 2:30 in the afternoon instead of 1:30. And that is based on some of the exhibits that are provided with you and some of the exhibits on the screen here that showed drone imagery of the different parking lots at different times. And it is staff's opinion that on a few of these different images, and we highlight them in the staff report, by 108, I'm looking at one now, there is gaps where you see some empty stalls that you could navigate a patron up to that stall. Staff just wondered how much time and effort it does to, to navigate staff to a stall when you still see a lot of cars in the lot versus an hour later, by 2:30, you see a lot of images that show larger portions of the parking lot open. And it was the opinion of staff that those seem to be then easier and quicker to park than finding gaps here and there on each row. You've heard the counter argument by the professional parking companies. So you've got two different opinions before you got staff that looked at this and said, well, on a conservative side, we'd suggest 2:30 instead of 1:30. And you've heard from the applicants what their opinion is. I just wanted to say philosophically, the whole reason we went through this whole CUP update a year ago was to deal with some major traffic issues. And the overall philosophy of the permit is, let's figure out a way to get more patrons to the site on a bus or in an alternate method than driving to the site. And when we saw this request, it just suggested to staff that this is just really, again, bringing more cars to the site. Now they say it's going to be well-managed, and it's not going to cause backups, and I get that. But its counter to the whole philosophy is, I thought we were working towards reducing the number of vehicles coming to the site. So that's probably embedded in staff's more conservative approach here as well. But that's the staff's recommendation. The township recommended approval of both of these requests. At their July 11th, meaning you have the form in front of you. Min dot staff were made aware of this. The staff that are working in our transportation management group, they had no, no concerns. They identified no concerns on the request. So, that's where we stand for recommendations. I invite you to open up a public hearing, and then you can make your recommendations.
Okay, thank you for your report. This is a public hearing. Anyone who'd like to come up to the podium, please start with your name and sign in.
I'm Peter Louisville Township Supervisor. I spent a lot of time last year, and I got to thank the staff and ownership of the Ren Fest. They gave me full run of the whole place. Every day that they were open, I spent several hours there, going through the parking lots, looking at the traffic. Tony was more than gracious to take me along, show me the drone, show me the pictures. He does a class act, and he knows what he's doing. As far as, I know we made the recommendation, the $30 parking pass, we're fine with that. I hate to micromanage businesses as a township supervisor. Yeah, I'd come there in the afternoon, and I'd look, and the whole front of the parking lot would be scattered cars here and there, and the rest of it's wide open. And then I see these poor people parking way at the back end of the parking lot, walking through an open, empty parking lot. That's not good business. So, to have them have the ability to fill those spots up, my opinion, we need to let them do that. I know Tony's smart enough to figure out that as the cars are leaving that direction, you can bring new cars in this direction, so the flow all goes out and in. So that's one thing that I would like to see a change in. The timeframe that Brad's talking about, 1:30 versus 2:30, you know, from what I saw down there last year, the 1:30 might work. I know we approved it for 2:30.
You approved it for 1:30.
Pardon me?
The township approved it for 1:30.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Awesome. Last year, amongst all the disbeliefs everybody had that Tony could work his magic, I believe that I'm impressed with what he did. There was a lot of traffic issues. 41 was closed through Chaska. And now this year, there's a whole nother set of traffic issues. I'm hoping 169 will be all open before you guys open next week. They're shaking yes. So, that'd work out. Okay. Tonight, I, I heard the mention of the Green Lot. I don't know if you guys are proposing any parking in the Green Lot or not. You showed it on that one slide you had.
We're not planning on using it.
They're not planning on using it, okay. So with that, I know fellow supervisors also went out and, and did a lot of checking, but I was there, I think I missed two days. Otherwise, they were more gracious to let me come through and, and supervise the parking area. With that, I'll, do you have any other questions for me?
Yes, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Cheryl Lucet, Louisville Township Clerk, but I'm also a resident, right across the road from the Renaissance. And I just wanted to say, I was very impressed last year with the difference in traffic. Really, to be honest, over the course of the years that I've lived on 169, it's always been a, just, you know, the Renaissance season is starting. But last year, it was to the point where you didn't even notice the traffic like prior years. So, I guess, I don't have a vote from the township standpoint, but I do want to have it be said on record that the improvement was very noticeable. And going forward, I guess, with the replenishing, the only question is, for me, if it becomes where this don't work, what recourse, from the township standpoint, I guess, can we say, we don't want to allow this because it didn't work? But as a resident, what they did last year worked, so if we have to go back, I don't know if we can go back, but I just wanted to say, it didn't make a major difference. So I just wanted to be on record saying that. I would just say, maybe push for more busing. You know, people use the transit. But I do know there are the diehards that want to come down and, you know, get their garb on and all that kind of stuff. But just wanted to, to say it did make an improvement. So hopefully, if they can make this work and keep the traffic flowing and not back up, I mean, I'm in favor. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Just a quick answer to one of the questions. What if this doesn't work? I do want to go on record, repeating what's in the application that Min America Festivals submitted. In that application, it says that Min America Festivals is willing to agree that if county staff at their sole discretion determines that this change allowing the backfill, the replenishment of vehicles in the afternoon, is having a negative impact, and that Min America Festivals cannot resolve the issue before the following weekend, Min America Festival will unilaterally stop this change and return to the original condition. So that's what they've expressed. We won't have a way to embed that in a condition, but we can only take their word in their application that they would honor that if there is an impact.
Thanks. Do you want to respond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I was going to point that out, so thank you, Brad, that we are more than willing to eliminate the backfill procedure if it causes an adverse impact compared to what we're saying will be a positive result. I also wanted to just make one comment about a very, very good point that Mr. Davis brought up that I forgot to clarify. As you can see in the picture here, the, the 108 p.m. picture, the majority of this vacancy did not occur in the last 30 minutes. I was digging for a drone picture from 11:30 a.m., and you'd see there also is substantial vacant space in the Kingslot. Those cars had started to leave as early as 11 o'clock that day. The very good question was pointed out of, hey, how long does it take to get vehicles into those open spaces? That is actually a very critical decision that we make before we start backfilling a, a parking lot. If the ingress volume is too great to be accommodated for in the current vacancy in a zone within the parking lots, we will not start backfilling. We'll make the determination that it's better for traffic to reroute them to a park and ride before we create interior gridlock within the site. So we're constantly monitoring the available capacity, and as you can see in this image, this would be a clear yes to backfill. I can, I could have put 1,500 cars in here very efficiently without having any interior site congestion. If the site looked, I'm just going to find a random image here, if the site looked like the 10:20 a.m., I would never backfill the front of this parking lot right now because there's probably only 100 spaces up there, and if I tried to shove 500 cars up there, you'd have mass congestion through the site. So, just to further underscore the request that we would like to manage backfill based on all of those criteria, not on an arbitrary time, is how I can absolutely guarantee you that we'll deliver the desired outcome. And this, this vacancy here at 108, that's shown at 108 p.m., was just on the peak Saturday. That vacancy is different every single day of the festival, right? And so we're monitoring that and making decisions based on what that looks like, whether it's noon, 11, or 3 p.m. It's, it has to have about that amount of vacancy to put any, any major traffic through it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Anyone else like to comment on this? Still a public hearing?
Just, sure.
Come on up.
My name's Bo Bower. I'm with the festival, and I just want to clarify a couple points that were already covered. One is, we have enhanced busing this year compared to last. Last year, we had MVTA with three park and ride hubs, plus Scott County Fairgrounds, plus Canterbury, Canterbury being the largest. This year, we're not using the Scott County Fairgrounds, but we're using Canterbury. MVTA has their three hubs, and we brought on Southwest with four additional hubs. So we are encouraging people to take buses. We also have no plans to advertise. You can come up, and you could probably find a parking spot. So we're not doing any marketing to encourage people to do anything but purchase parking passes in advance. And again, we're replacing vehicles that left. We're not adding to that number, and we rely on Tony to decide if he should backfill or if he should send people out. And we think relying on him is the best, is the best approach, is the best approach to take. And we probably will be back with more requests next year. I think somebody asked that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearings.
We're moved.
Okay. Mr. Henshaw? And Commissioner Watson, any discussion?
Yeah, I think we've got, we've got a time.
I got to call on, I got to call on the vote.
Oh, you got to call, okay.
I'll favor closing the public hearing, vote aye.
All right.
Okay, now we can.
Now we can talk. I see we have a time issue here. 1:30 and 2:30, and, and I have no strong feelings either way.
Anyone else have any?
I agree, please. I concur too. I mean, it just, whatever, if they're willing to back off or bring forward the limit as they empty out the parking lots, so be it.
The recommendation was that 1:30, staff was at 2:30.
Okay, so, I didn't catch that.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, so that's the only difference between the two. I, I concur. So I just concur at this point. I appreciate the staff's opinion and, and point on it, but I think that with the successes they're having, and this was historically such a horrendous traffic issue there.
I just have one comment, and the comment is that I have, I feel that the use of technology that is available for the parking spot, to make the optimal use of the spots, we are missing that. And we should be making use of that technology. That, that would solve the problem. That is my, someone has to look and, look into the available, whatever, whatever is available, and if they find something, we can better manage that parking spots.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, I have a motion.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion this time.
Mr. Chair, based on the criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of approval of the Mid-America Festivals' requested CUP amendment to modify Condition 31, setting the price of the Atgate Parking Voucher to double the price of the online pre-purchased voucher, and Condition 32, allowing the applicant's professional parking company to sell daily parking passes in a number equal to, but not greater than the number of vehicles that leave the site with continuous monitoring, beginning at 2:30 in the afternoon.
I have a motion by Commissioner Robinson. Do I have a second?
One second.
Back to Commissioner Henshaw. This time, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, vote aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes. Thank you very much for your information provided tonight on this, and for everyone's perspective. And it's good to see that it appears to be working very well, making positive progress with that. Okay, our next item is number 2024-039, Request Approved Initial Use Permit to Operate Tree and Landscape Contractor Yard and Lease Space to Other Industrial Uses, Hawkins Property LLC, the Gladys Lindstrom Trust, property owner, in Section 28 of Louisville Township. And Greg Wagner will be making the staff.
I'm just getting ready.
Greg Wagner will be getting the computer projection set up. And Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator, will be making the staff report.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, board members. On the screen, site location map for Hawkins Tree, conditional use permit request to operate a tree contractor yard, a tree service contractor yard, and to lease space to other industrial type users. The property is in Section 28 of Spring Lake Township. The parcel is zoned industrial. This parcel is about 2 and 3/4 acres in size. It was created when the county developed the Louisville Frontage Road and the 147th Street Overpass of 169 back in 2018, 2019. This parcel was initially part of Minnesota Valley Nursery, which included these parcels here and over here. Well, it's still part of Minnesota Valley Nursery. The applicant has a purchase agreement on it. But that's how it was severed onto such a small, small piece of property. Here's an area photo of the site. Again, the property bordered Louisville Road on the east, 147th Street on the south, 169 on the west. To the north of the subject property is a trucking company, Stream Transport. They occupy about a six acre parcel here. And then Minnesota Valley Nursery occupies the properties to the east of Louisville Road and then to the south of 147th Street. There are a couple buildings on the property currently. These buildings were put up in 1970 or 1980, so quite a while ago. They were put up by the nursery and utilized for cold storage and equipment and vehicle maintenance. Staff had a DRT meeting with the applicant back in June of 2023 to talk about him moving onto this property. He moved onto the property shortly after that, leasing space in the building to a truck repair business, also started grading the property without grading permits. So he has been cited for operation of a business on the property without the proper conditional use permit, also upgrading on the property without the proper grading permits. Shortly after, the information was sent out to other county departments for review. Here, we got feedback from our Public Works Department on this property. Not only is there a right of way that's been purchased by the Highway Department for these roads, there's also a slope and drainage utility easement that run through this area here. Mr. Hawkins had done work impacting that slope and drainage utility easement, so that needs to be put back into the condition it was. And Mr. Hawkins has applied for a permit from our Transportation Services Department to do that. Also, we wouldn't allow any parking within that slope easement. We would not allow any landscaping within that slope easement, and we don't want landscaping adjacent to it that's going to impact possible service of that easement in the future. In addition, we received feedback from our Natural Resources Department, the stormwater facility that is shown on the west side of the property adjacent to 169. I believe it's more stormwater quality and rate control plant. Our Natural Resources Engineer did indicate that the property, due to its size and amount of impervious service, would require a resource management plan, which is more involved engineering on stormwater, would also require likely some rate control out here. So we need to get a stormwater plant that meets our requirements approved, so we know what impacts to the site those facilities would have. Also, our Environmental Health Office reviewed the project. This property actually has a septic system that's on the stream parcel to the north. There is no septic system on this property, and there isn't room for a septic system on this property. The good news is, the system that's on the stream property to the north is code compliant and is sized sufficiently for what Mr. Hawkins wants to do. The one issue that has come up is, due to the age of the structures, our environmental service staff believes that the floor drains in the building are also being plumbed to that septic system. And that would be required to be, if that is the case, the requirement would be to separate those floor drains, to put those into a holding tank that could be pumped out, rather than putting it into the septic system. So there potentially is a need for another septic tank out here. The two tanks that are in place now are in this area here. And likely, if they added another tank, it would have to be in that area as well. One more. Here is a landscape plant. Minnesota Valley Landscape has put together a landscape plant for them. This has 70-plus landscape units. I believe 45 are required as part of their, due to the lot size. So they exceed the plant numbers. The question is, where are they putting them? Making sure that they're outside of any potential easement. The applicant is also showing some building expansion here, either side of the existing, and potentially another building to be constructed to the west between 169 and this building. Got some, here are some building elevations for the addition to the existing building, which I think is more imminent than putting up the additional structure to the west here. Staff is very concerned with this project. It's not a large property. It's a relatively small property. It's encumbered by the slope easement, drainage utility easement. The applicant is coming from a 10 acre parcel in the city of Shakopee. He already, we already have equipment and trucks being stored out there. We are concerned that, is this property big enough for what he intends to do with it? He indicates, yes, I'm going to downsize, and I'll make it fit, and I'll make it work. But I think because of the constraints on the property, it's critical that we clearly identify on the survey what areas are available for outside storage, what areas are available for parking of trucks, parking for employees, parking for vehicles waiting repair. And until we get the resource management plan to know what the extent of the stormwater infrastructure is, until we get the feedback from his site evaluator to know if we need to add another tank, you can't park on top of tanks, we feel like we should, we should hold off on making a recommendation on this project. We also would like to see the landscaping shown on the survey, so it clearly delineates how much room that landscaping is going to consume. We feel we need all those things to, for staff to have a good idea that this is what you're allowed. And I think it's for the applicant's best interest too, to know exactly what he will have available for storage and parking of vehicles. So we've got some new information in the week and a half since the planning report was sent out. So we're working in the right direction. We could be back as soon as next month with a recommendation for you if we get this information that we feel so critical when it comes to this particular conditional use permit.
In the meantime, you want to continue this, is that right?
That is correct. The applicant did go to the township meeting last Thursday, and the township recommended a continuance as well. So the applicant is here, as is the Louisville Town Board.
Mr. Chair. Marty, I'm just curious about the septic system. It's not on the property. It must have been built previously. Landowner that had controlled all that land. I'm just curious why it's not part of this parcel.
Exactly what you said, Commissioner Huber. It was installed probably 15, 20 years ago, yeah, when this was all, one parcel was all owned by Minnesota Valley Nursery.
Yeah. But when they subdivided, they should have put a, I mean, that's all hindsight, but they probably should have the septic in there.
I think a lot of the subdivision was forced through the development of the road system out there, the Louisville Frontage Road, the 14 overpass interchange. That forced a lot of the subdivision that you're seeing here.
Okay, thank you.
Question, is there an easement on that? If your neighbor comes along and says, no more, you have a, thank you.
Are you saying about the septic system, right?
Yeah, I meant being that the septic system is on the north side of the property, off the property. Is there a written easement to protect?
Yeah, that is my understanding, Commissioner Pecos, that there is an easement in place for going on there and maintaining that system if need be.
Very good. So that is the recommendation this time. Do you want the applicant to come up and?
Yeah, I mean, the applicants are here. The town board is here. I guess if they would have any comments, we could have them.
Is public hearing?
Yeah.
So if anyone would like to make comment on this, at this time, we have the staff report. If the applicant would like to say anything, as soon as they can, don't have to.
We're going to see you again.
Okay. Anyone want to say anything? At this point, I'll entertain a motion.
I have just a question, Mr. Chair. That in this application, the action deadline is August 2020. What happens in this case?
Commissioner who's saying, the 60-day review period runs through August 20. Staff has the ability to extend that another 60 days. So we will send the applicant a letter extending that another 60 days. So that'll extend it out into around the 20th of October to take action on it. So we do have a couple months yet to work on.
My question would be, what action are we taking?
We're continuing.
We're going to be differing?
Yeah, we're continuing it to a future date, would be the recommendation of staff at this time. That's a good question. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Robinson, second by Commissioner Henshaw. All in favor, vote aye. I'll entertain a motion on this item before us.
Mr. Chairman, because there are so many outstanding items that need to be addressed, recommend and request to continue. The additional time will permit the applicant the opportunity to address the comment memos from Transportation Services and Natural Resources. Update the site survey grading plan and landscape screening plan, address any township comments, and accurately demonstrate where outside storage may be located.
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Watson, second by Commissioner Robinson. Any further discussion before I call for a vote? All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Your item has been continued. So, thank you very much. Next item, our final item this evening, final public hearing this evening, is number 2024-11, Request Approved Preliminary Plat for Two Lots and Three Outlots and a Conditional Use Permit to Construct and Operate a Rail-Served Material Transloading and Processing Center on 81.29 acres in heavy industrial I-2 zoning, Cambria Real Estate Holdings LLC applicant, and Great Plains Sand LLC property owner, in Section 33 of Louisville Township.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission member is still on the screen is the site location map for the property. You heard the variance earlier tonight. This item is again continued from our April Planning Commission meeting, due to uncertainties with the frontage road through the site. Since that meeting, a lot of work has gone into the frontage road through the whole Shakopee Sand property. This property is the northern half of the Shakopee Sand, silica sand mine IUP. And in that IUP, it did talk about a frontage road through the property. So we've been working with the applicant, working with the town board of Louisville, talking to the town board of Sand Creek, to try and work out a solution here where we get the frontage road under construction. Initially, the idea was that we were going to build that, we were going to require the road to come up from the south off a bluff, avoiding the railroad crossing of the UP up by Smith Drive. Jump to a plan. Up in this area where Smith Drive crosses the railroad here, there's uncertainty with the railroad as to whether they will allow that road to stay in that current alignment. In all likelihood, they will not. They will ask for that skew to be improved to like an 80 or 90 degree crossing of the railroad. However, we don't know exactly how that's going to turn out at this point. The township engineer has had some conversations with the railroad. And the next step in that process is a diagnostic meeting with railroad staff and township and applicant's engineers to work through some of those issues. So as part of the preliminary plat, what's being discussed is dedicating right of way through this area, the whole thing, on the preliminary and final plat, until we can get some of those answers. And then, once we have those answers, we can further define that right of way, and then dedicate back to the applicant right of way that isn't needed. So that's how that solution is being worked out. As you come across the railroad, you swing to the south, and you actually cross Pika Creek, which is another little bit of an unknown. We're working with DNR there. There has been other improvements to Pika Creek here recently, and there's been some culvert sizing for that creek. So we have a pretty good idea what would be required there. But until we actually get through all that permitting process, we won't know. The applicant is committed to building this road, is committed to doing the engineering for this road. It's just going to take some time to work with the railroad, to work with DNR. So the thought was, as long as we have adequate right of way to get that road constructed at a future date, hopefully before the end of 2026, that we're making the improvement, we're getting the frontage road, we're getting our accesses off of 169. And we think we can make the changes that'll make the township better, make the access to the sites better, improve transportation on 169, safety-wise. In the interim, until this road would get developed, their access would continue to come off of 169. They have direct access to 169 at this time. So you can see that axis is located right here. That would come into the property. Once this road is built, it would be built all the way to the southern extent of the property. Then the access to 169 would be removed, and they would just have their driveway coming up that frontage road. The site itself would consist of the rail-served warehouse that we talked about earlier, the processing plant here, a large container storage yard to the north here, and then material stockpile in this location. They would actually be doing some changes to the rail lines out here to get access to this rail-served warehouse. Jump along a little bit here. This is the landscape plan, the overall landscape plan. So their overall landscape plan calls for plantings along the future road, adjacent to the container storage yard, helps soften the view from that road. The container storage yard, I believe, will be below the road. We don't have the full engineering on the road yet, but I think that's the case. And then you'll have the landscaping there. It'll follow along through the entrance to the facility. There's additional plantings around the buildings that meet our coordinates. They're showing more planting. They're showing more plantings than our landscaping requirements require, so we're good with the landscaping. Here's the lighting plan that shows the lighting on the property. They'll have to show us a lighting plan that meets our requirements, and we're still working on some of those details. But prior to bringing this thing to the board, we're going to have that worked out. The applicant did go to the township meeting last Thursday night. The township staff, their attorney, myself, worked on revised conditions for both the conditional use permit and the preliminary plat. Those conditions were in your folders here tonight. We did further revisions to those conditions today with the applicant. I think we have a list of conditions whereby we're ready to move forward with the preliminary plat and the conditional use permit. There are a number of things, of details, that still have to be addressed, but the overall concept and the framework is in place to bring the plat forward and the CUP.
Thank you very much. Any questions? We've visited this, it seems like, a number of times, and I'm pretty familiar with this. Any questions from the commission at this time? Got one question.
I heard rumors that there's bringing material, used material, and being stockpiled on the site. Is that true, or is that like damaged material from the plant and bringing it? Okay.
I've got a forty more. He's shaking his head, so I'm assuming the answer is no.
No, okay. Not that it matters, it just, you know, at this point, but I just don't see it on the site plan.
This is a public hearing.
Joel Peters, I'm the applicant with Cambria. Nice to see you again. There's not an answer to your question. We recycle material.
Right.
So the rumor that you heard is phrased probably not accurately. So, yeah, we'll recycle material here.
So it will come in and get stockpiled, then, I guess, is?
We have material stockpiled on the site that are quartz. We manufacture quartz countertops.
Yeah.
And then there's quartz stored on-site. That's what we're processing here.
Okay.
It's quartz product.
So it goes through the plant again, then, basically?
It could, yeah. Is there a concern with the?
No, it just, that'd be more dust, or is it elevator, stockpiling it? Is it blowing the wind? I guess that'd be my concern, being the closest neighbor there, but.
Yeah. Is there a? So shown on this plan here, you can see this kidney bean shape.
Yep.
And then the two circles, those are our material stockpiles that we have shown on the drawings. The conditions of the CUP have it to be a 50-foot stock high, or height, to stock that material. It'll be placed with, you know, a broadcaster, a conveyor belt, and that material is going to be a quartz product that we'll use. And it's not a sand, and so typically, it's going to be like a two-inch minus. And then that's what the material will be stockpiled as, and then it'll be fed into the processing building.
Thank you.
So basically, I'm questioning your answer. You said you are not stockpiling the material, but you said no. But without stockpiling it, how can you recycle the material?
It's stockpiled. There's material stockpiled, is what I was saying no to.
Stockpiling. So why did you say no?
Because he said defective or damaged product. That's not what we're doing. So that's what I was saying no to. Obviously, we're stocking, we're stockpiling material.
Okay, so your complete answer is you are not stockpiling damaged or broken material? Is that what you are saying?
I don't, I can't answer that question, just because it's too, it's too, it's too, like, fragmented, because you can take countertop, you can crush it down, and then reuse it. So how do you define? For us, that's not defined as defective. So we'll be recycling product or material? It seems like it's outside of the, the moral of the story for this topic is, we're stockpiling material, we're processing it, putting it in containers, and then taking it out of the factory.
I take it the moral of the story is you cannot recycle any material without stockpiling it before?
Yeah, yep.
So you are stockpiling it?
Yes.
Yes, say yes.
I believe I did, so, yes.
I.
You know, I don't, yeah.
Thank you, Joel. But we're just curious of the dust, I guess, part of it, I guess, is why I brought it up.
Yeah.
It is. Thank you.
Anyone else like to make comment?
Thursday night, we approved Cambria's deal. This morning, I talked to Bob Rupi. Between Joe and him, they're going over some of our development agreements and negotiating a few things, but everything seems is good to go. He's going to get it settled all, so, so not a problem with us.
I think you're the only person in the room who hasn't come up and talked yet tonight, so.
Yeah.
So.
Maybe Mark up there.
Yeah, yeah, Mark. Did you do anything before I closed the public hearing? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Roberts.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Henshaw. All in favor of what?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Chairman, based on the conditions of approval and criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of Cambria's REH's conditional use permit, CUP, and preliminary plat approval, CREH addition, to use the site for material transloading and processing center.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Robbins, second by Commissioner Pika. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Motion is true. Planning manager report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Since our last meeting, only one item went to the county board, based on your recommendation. That was to approve an interim use permit for a home extended business to operate a painting business that was in Spring Lake Township. Two other items, thanks to Commissioner Robbins and Hussain, they agreed to attend the upcoming training that I notified you all, and that was good. I was looking for one or two commissioners, and I'm glad two of you were able to find that, to work in your schedules. So they'll be up in St. Cloud late in September, I think. I've lost track of time, but.
Nor is it, it's 29.
I guess, so at our September meeting, we'll want to get a report of what you learned at the training. Also, in September, we have a lighter agenda. We may have one or two action items. So I am going to ask that we do a workshop, and the topic will be the cannabis ordinance. We're going to spend time at staff here drafting up some ideas for that ordinance. And we want to start getting your feedback at our September Planning Commission meeting. The board wants to workshop the item as well that same week, and then we'll want to get it out to the townships as well. So there'll be a lot of effort to get that.
I heard a really, really good speaker on that that talks about the history of it and is very knowledgeable in that area.
Okay.
Be interested in, maybe I'll give you the contact information.
Good, thank you. That's all I have for an update.
Motion, today?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Motion, Commissioner Robbins, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Huber, all in favor of what?
Aye.
Thank you very much to everyone, to staff, to everyone here. You had a great job tonight. It was a long meeting, everyone, so.